Good evening.
Good evening.
City of Lamarck, City Council's regular agenda of August 26, 2024. Notice is here by giving that the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a regular meeting on August 26, 2024, beginning at 6:00 PM in council chambers, 1109B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. According to Section 551.127B of the Texas Local Government Code, the presiding officer in the form of the Lamarck City Council intend to be and will physically be present at 1109B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public and the meeting will be broadcast at this location on Channel 16 and via YouTube. The council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called to order. Now, Kiera, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember District A.
Present.
Councilmember District B.
Present.
Councilmember District C.
Present.
Councilmember District D.
Present.
And Mayor.
Present. Thank you, Kiera. Let us stand if we are able for the invocation and we'll ask Mr. Caesar Garcia to lead us in our pledge. Let's pray. Merciful God, we acknowledge your presence in this place and certainly at the head of our lives. Thank you, God, for the opportunity to be part of such a great community. Thank you, God, for each and every member of this community, those that we call family, those that we call neighbors, those that we call our friends. Lord bless this council as we navigate the issues of the lives of those that we have been put here to represent. Lord, help us in grace, mercy, and truth and willingness forward ahead. Lord, with propositions, with ideas, a Lord that will benefit this citizenry as a whole. Lord, we turn this entire meeting over to you. Have your way. We thank you in advance. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Thank you to the Republic which stands united, sovereign, God, and their people. We worship thee in the best of all.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. We are excited tonight to have with us the Gulf Coast Transit District. They're here to give us a presentation this evening. So if you all are members of Gulf Coast Transit District, you may approach. We should have more than one seat. Do we need more than one seat? You got, thank you. If you all would take a seat and introduce yourselves, we will certainly be interested in your presentation. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Mr. Mayor and to the ladies and gentlemen of City Council, to the entire city staff, to the citizens of Lamarck, thank you for inviting us to, for this brief presentation. My name is Tim Sykes. I'm Public Affairs for Gulf Coast Transit District. This is Ted Ross. He's the Acting Executive Director. We're excited to be here. We're not new to Lamarck. We did want to present our services that has transformed for the betterment of the citizens of Lamarck.
Very good. Welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have prepared for you a brief presentation of our rider services and community connections and public affairs. So we're not new to Lamarck. We previously, I think you've seen us ride around in the bus since, and Gulf Coast Transit District buses, where we previously picked up at bus stops. But we don't do that anymore. We transform a lot of small urban cities and rural cities are migrating to what's called micro-transit spare lab services, where citizens can order the ride directly to their house, similar to Uber and Lyft, and the prices have not changed. Now, I'll go over that with you. So the micro-transit spare platform overview is, and I want to read it line for line. I do have some copies of this PowerPoint that I will leave for the citizens. It's a, it's a software as a service solution for delivering any type of shared rider service. It's free download, they ride in the spare lab, fire riders, apps, user interface, and intuitive one tap booking process. It allows riders to plan, book, and pay for rides through transit services powered by Spare Platform. Riders will always receive vehicle location and trip updates. As these notifications are offered in real time, riders are empowered with everything they need to know about their trip request. Riders, the partner vehicle can be prompted to review their ride based on the experience of the trip, so that a feedback loop is continuous on the service, its riders and drivers. So if you don't have a phone, no problem. Ladies and gentlemen, we have 1-800 CALL CENTER where you can call and book a ride if you can't download the app on your phone. You can also do what's called flag down ride if, if it's available. Okay? Sometimes rides can be quickly hopped on vehicle without being dispatched through from Spare Rider or Call Center, and they can do what's called a flag down. To handle this, Spare Drivers have flag down functionality. So if they're flagged out and the available is there in the bus space, they can also flag down a, a Gulf Coast Transit District ride. This enables the driver to quickly add new trips to the vehicle and inform the rider when they're expected to drop off it. So there's a changing landscape in the public transportation sector. People want to see different offerings other than traditional buses. And because of this change, we're trying to be more flexible to meet community needs with more innovative solutions. This is an opportunity for people to get connected to transit so that they otherwise would not have access to. And we want to be able to get people to where they're going when they want to get there. These are the numbers for the City of Lamarck Spare Labs Ridership. So February 14th of this year is when we changed from the fixed route bus stop services to this Spare Labs Ridership. You'll notice that in February, when we made change, there was 394 riders for that month on the pickups, and drop offs were 431. What that means, ladies and gentlemen, is that we picked up 394 people in the City of Lamarck. We dropped off 431 people. The reason the numbers are different is because sometimes people will book a ride in Lamarck, going outside of Lamarck to possibly like Dickinson or to, you know, to, to the other cities within the rider zone. And that's why the pickup and drop off numbers are different. The other numbers that you see on the screen are the walkers and wheelchairs, because we do have vehicles equipped for wheelchairs and scooters and, and walkers. Okay? So February drop offs went to 431. March pickups increased to 940 riders. March drop offs were 988. Then in April, it went up to 1,006 riders with 17 walkers and 62 wheelchairs. The drop offs were 1,076 and so on. So you see an increase in ridership as we went to Spare Labs. And all this information, ladies and gentlemen, will be in your packet that I will leave for you. The rider zone cities include Texas City, Lamarck, Dickinson, Bay Cliff, San Leon, Lead City UTMB Park and Ride to Galveston UTMB Park and Ride, and Galveston UTMB Park and Ride to Lead City, which stops in Texas City. Cities outside of the rider zone include Alvin, Lead City, some areas, Santa Fe, Hitchcock, and Galveston. Other business cities that are outside this rider zone area here outside, requires a two day, 48 hour in advance booking. Can't book that on the app. You have to call the, the 1-800 Dispatch Call Center to book those two day in advance bookings. Okay? So, and we'll go with the prices here shortly. One way trip, Texas City, $2. Lead City, $4. Facilities to lead vehicle and take a bus from UTMB Lead City or Gulf Coast Transit District Admin to Texas City. Let me back up, ladies and gentlemen. Here, one way trip inside the rider zone for regular riders is $1. One way trip. So if you're here, right here, and you want to go to Walmart, you book a ride on that app. One demand is going to pick you up here, take you to Walmart, it's going to cost you $1. Book a ride and come back home, it's going to cost you $1. If you are a senior citizen, a student, or a handicapped individual, that ride is going to cost you 50 cents one way and 50 cents home. So $1 round trip. Okay? Outside of this rider zone here, this is considered outside of rider zone, Alvin, Santa Fe, Hitchcock, Galveston. Two day in advance booking. The first 10 miles is $2. Each additional mile is 25 cents. So if you got an additional 10 miles, that's an additional $2.50. So you're paying $4.50 for that ride. Okay? One way. That can now. It beats Uber and Lyft. We bring those chance and chance. So again, on the, on the one way trip, Texas City, $2. Lead City, $4. Facilities to lead vehicle to take a bus from UTMB Lead City or Gulf Coast Transit District Admin Building to Texas City to UTMB Galveston. Rider coupon books are available for purchase. So general, all purpose, 20 rides, $15. For regular riders, you're saving $5. Okay? Senior students and persons with disabilities, 20 rides, you're going to pay $7.50 half price. Okay? Texas City Park and Ride, 50 rides, $75. Because their rides are $4. $4, okay? Lead City Park and Ride, 50 rides, $150. And ladies and gentlemen, we have a lot of parking ride customers born from Lead City to Galveston and from Galveston to Lead City, UTMB. We also provide a VA Michael E. DeBakey Hospital, Houston trip for $3.50 each way for all veterans. Okay? It's a two day in advance booking by calling the call center, and you can book out up to seven days in advance. Other locations that we go to, Houston Methodist, Embiid Anderson, Fanning Towers, City of Houston. If one of these rides cannot be booked on Gulf Coast Transit District app, all above listed bookings require a lot of the call center, call center, the schedule, the rides, the dispatch number is listed in there, or you may visit our website, Gulf Coast Transit District. Like I said, two day bookings required outside of the micro-transit rider zone. Ladies and gentlemen, this is just a few of our community connections and partnerships that we have within our, both, because we provide services, not only in Galveston County, but we also provide services for Brazoria County. Okay? And so these are some of our community connections and partnerships. And like I said, the City of Lamarck are not strangers to us. We have been providing public transportation for the City of Lamarck quite some time since the inception and the partnership. Okay? That's all, and I'll leave you but now, please, I'll entertain questions at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sykes. If there's, there's any questions, they're going to be coming from the council here. Any, any questions that come from our audience will have to be asked and answered after this outside.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Council, do you have any questions for the Gulf Coast, the Gulf Coast Transit District?
Great information. A lot of it I wasn't aware of, especially in transition. You said you, you can book the ride to the medical? In the past, that's been one of our challenges, by the way, in some past years. And I've been involved in that, that input, especially the medical center. That was one of the absence, that was one of the weaknesses in this county, trying to get to the medical center for, for treatments, especially tertiary care and specialized care. But my question is, you get us there and in this same process, you can bring us back? How does that work out?
So really, we advertise that we do it for veterans. We have had people on regular bookings that will book. When we take a veteran to the VA hospital in, in Houston, we have a designated driver for that, and he takes him up there and he waits, right? He waits a period of time and he drops those individuals off, and he's waiting in that area until a certain time of the day until they finish. Because he has a manifest and he knows who all of his riders are going to be for that particular trip. And we do bring them back. So if we, if somebody booked with us on a round trip, especially a trip like that, we definitely are going to return them back to where we picked them up from.
Okay. And the, the collaborators that you had shown here, are those, what does that mean, they're collaborators?
So partnership is like, we provide public transportation for a lot of those businesses' clients. Some of those are like the dialysis clinics locally. We, we pick up a lot, mostly all of the dialysis clinic patients that don't have transportation to the dialysis clinic. We take them there. We pick up local citizens right here in the City of Lamarck. Take them to Walmart, pick them back up from grocery shopping, take them back home. We take some little ladies to their beauty shop appointments and pick them back up and take them home. So a lot of the partnerships that you've seen mean that we service a lot of their clients from those businesses and nonprofits and social service agencies.
The membership, and I don't know if this is accurate or not, but on your website, the, the rep from Lamarck is, is a former council person, is not, or the, I don't, I don't think this is updated yet.
We're in the process of updating our website, all of our information. Like I said, previously, we worked Connect Transit when we were with the Gulf Coast Centers. So we're, we're in transition with, with the websites, the, the, the social media platforms and all that. And let me say this, council, we don't make money on ridership.
No, understood.
So we're grant funded and Texas dot FTA and some other agencies. But yes, we're in the midst of updating all of that information.
And if I could just comment on that, Mayor Potem, they, I was just invited to their most previous meeting, I think, held a week and a half ago. Whoever sat in this chair has traditionally had a spot on that board. They've invited me, based on the board's recommendation to do so, as was directed through council, I want to say maybe two years ago, if, if I remember correctly. So I have started attending, I've been to one meeting so far, which has took place that, that this organization has invited me to attend. Hence, we knew that it was coming up during budget. We knew that it was discussion, we knew they had to come by anyways. They had meant to come by before the whole switch, but this was as soon as they could come by. Thank you.
I'd like to say, a lot of people ask, why do you switch? You know, why, why do you want to go to on demand? Before, we had the fixed route system, and if you think about it, if you live more than a couple blocks from a bus stop, are a lot of people going to be able to walk to that bus stop and stand at that bus stop, you know, in this heat that we have, or the, you know, a few cold days we have in the winter, or it's raining and they need to go somewhere. And so what that did, that limit, who could ride this service? This service here opened it up from city limit to city limit. Doesn't matter where you live, we're going to pull up right in front of your house and pick you up and drop you off at the door where you're going. And like I said, if it's grocery shopping, it's doctor's appointment, or it's going across town to see grandma, we, we cover it all.
That's all. Thanks.
Any, any other questions? Is there any way that you all could possibly, and maybe you all still do, return to fixed routes in certain situations? For example, and this is the, the only example that I have, that we have a 55 plus senior apartment complex on Newman Road. And I've visited with those folks several times. And in fact, one of the last times I visited with them, they were sharing with me how disappointed they were that they went to this on demand system. A lot of those residents are older. They are not necessarily digitally, electronically, social media savvy, technologically savvy in any way. And they lamented the fact that there used to be a stop. And, you know, a robust community, I believe, is 100, over 100 apartment complex, units. Is there any way for, for your organization to at least go and visit with them?
Yeah.
And I would like to be a part of that meeting, because there's a lot of concern at that location about this particular on demand programming.
If, if they give me an invite, I'd be glad to come and do a separate kind of presentation from this right here to accommodate them into our booking process beyond the app with the call centers. And so I'm, I'll be glad to go and talk with them and do a town hall talk and bring brochures and information, help them and assist them. At, at, at the point of fixed routes, of course, we're governed, like I said, by Texas I and, and FTA and things like that. And so, but I'll be glad to help and assist mayor with the transition and helping them to learn and adapt, to be able to book even with the call centers. Because we have dispatchers in the call center that operate from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday.
One of the other things they did mention was when, when we do have, and again, we can probably, feedback would be the best, the best way to resolve this. When we do have riders, they are from that particular complex, they're seniors. And so they end up being transported to, let's say, Walmart. Well, by the time they're done with their business, it's hot outside, it's the middle of summer, and many of them have complained about the next time that the bus comes to retrieve them from, that their health is kind of suffering when they have to endure that. If you could talk to them about that as well?
Yes. And some of that came from the misunderstanding of the booking.
Okay, okay.
You have three options to book from, leave at, leave now, and leave by. And arrive by.
Okay.
So some of that was in the booking process where they would select arrive by, and, and of course, it's a window opportunity for them to be picked up. And that's why I say I'll go and I'll talk.
Absolutely.
And, and, and go over each step and process with them.
Okay.
Just work for other communities like mansions at, at Moses Lake and different things like that.
Okay. Mr. Sykes, if you would leave your card, that way I can, I can distribute that to, to their leadership.
Sure, I'm back to you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Do you have any other questions, council, for? Absolutely, absolutely. Do you have any other questions, council, for, uh, Gulf Coast Transit District? Hey, none. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. Excellent presentation. We are definitely more informed because of it. Look forward to working with you, gentlemen, in the near, near future. Item five, citizens' participation. Limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who has signed up may speak to council limited to three minutes. If wishing to speak, give the mayor, the presiding officer, your full legal name, the address, and item you wish to speak about. Applies to Texas Open Beans Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed, and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Press star six to mute or unmute yourself if you are participating via telephone. Uh, if you are participating via the Zoom platform, uh, you may, through your smartphone, tablet, or computer, uh, you may press the, uh, microphone icon in the lower portion of your screen to mute and unmute yourself. Uh, if you are attending with us in person, uh, there is, uh, a seat, uh, before me with a microphone, uh, on it, uh, and you will be heard at this time. Uh, Kyle, are there persons, excuse me, before we ask, thank you. Thank you.
There is.
Thank you. So let's rephrase that. There is, again, a podium. Thank you. Thank you, Kyle. Uh, before us, uh, you may approach the podium when your name is called, and again, name, address, uh, and you will be heard. Let's remember that this council is one body, uh, and that we will not allow any personal attacks. Uh, please address the council as a whole, uh, address us as council, uh, and you will be heard. Are there, Kyle, any persons wishing to speak online tonight? If you're wishing to speak online tonight, you may give us your name. Address.
Yes, my name's Michael Carlson. I live in Hood River, Oregon.
Welcome, Michael. You may speak, Michael.
Thank you, sir. Reason why I am coming to your council meeting tonight is you, there is a council member who is very unprofessional. And his conduct is un, this person's conduct is unprofessional. They talk down to citizens, including people that don't even live in their district. This person is singling out fellow council members.
Ma'am, 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 ma'am. What, 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 what we are going to do, uh, he addressed the council, ma'am, 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 I'm presiding, officers. Officers. Officers, ma'am, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, thank you for your comments, I'm gonna speak now. Again, he addressed the council as a whole, he did not, ma'am. He addressed the council as a whole. He did not name any names. He is allowed to say council member, he is allowed to say person, because there are four, actually five council members up here. Uh, the mayor is a council member as well. And so this is our history, this is our tradition. Ever since we've been doing this, we've allowed them to, ma'am, yes, we do, yes, we do, yes, we do, because, because we, ma'am, ma- ma'am, ma'am. Ma'am. I am presiding over the meeting. This has been, this, we, we do this every week, we're gonna move on, we do it just like this every week. Okay? He is allowed to say everything other than make an accusation or name a person. Okay? He didn't do that. Let's move on. How much time does Michael have? Michael, you have two minutes and how long? Two minutes and 21 seconds. Go.
Thank you, sir. Um, that's end of my first comment that I'd like to make. The second, second thing I would like to make a comment on is the, regarding the forensic audit that y'all are going to talk about tonight. Now, this city, the city of Lamarck, a forensic audit costs anywhere between $350 to $550 an hour. Depending on how in-depth they go, they're looking, you're probably looking 50 to 100 hours at least. Well, that's quite a bit of money that the city of Lamarck should use for other purposes. If you look at another city that's in the news, their mayor is corrupt, and it's not local, but it's in the news. And I'm not going to mention it because it's irrelevant. But the city of Lamarck does not need to go through and spend that type of money because there's no need for it. That money can be better spent on the infrastructure or on the parks master plan. So thank you for your time, council. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir. Any other persons online wishing to speak? Very good, thank you. We will now move to those that are here before us in person.
Nobody. I have something to say. Hi.
Yes, ma'am. Welcome, Ms. Ginger. We couldn't hear you. We can hear you now. Name and address.
Yeah, I have my microphone off.
Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Uh, Ginger Minette, 809 Grassino Trail, Lamarck. Um, as far as the audit goes, personally, I don't care how much it costs because it's something that needs to be done. I don't know how other citizens feel about it, but it definitely needs to be done. So, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other persons online wishing to speak? Very good. We will move now to those that are here before us in person. Mrs. Fridia Hardeman, Fridia Hardeman. Hopefully, I did not mispronounce that. Is it Fridia? Fridia, welcome, Ms. Fridia. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Fridia Hardeman. I live at 2607 Cedar Drive. I've been in Lamarck for decades. I am concerned about what's going on, and I do feel like we do need a party. Because I need to know for everybody to be transparent about what's going on, and we'd be better informed. The council members before you, since I've been here in decades, have always produced with the streets and whatever we had going on. Do you hear me? My husband and I have lived here, and I can tell you the story. So that's all I have to say.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Fridia. Mr. Leonard Payne. Welcome, Leonard. Name and address for the record, please.
Leonard Payne, 2728 Third Avenue, Lamarck. I've lived in Lamarck seventy-six years. Worked for the city of Lamarck 33 years. I've seen this town when it was a sweet little town, and it's gone to hell in a hurry. I know some of the equipment we had years ago ages out, you get rid of it and such as that. I, I've seen the equipment they used to have. There's none of it down at that city warehouse anymore. I don't see it on the streets. All I see on the streets every day is white trucks, and you better get out of their way. I reported several water leaks, sewer leaks over the years. Some of them have been taken care of, others haven't. Mr. Garcia, he almost fell in one of them the other day, taking pictures of that manhole on the hill. That water leak or sewer, whatever's in that ditch has been there for over a year. Yet these white trucks leaving the barn cannot see that water standing in that ditch to report it or get it taken care of. I've reported an intersection at Fourth and Main, where you cannot see oncoming traffic trying to drive off of Fourth Avenue, which we do at my house quite a bit. Without knowing if anything's coming across those railroad tracks, those workers, shift change, some of them are in a pretty good hurry when they fly over them tracks and almost hit you, somebody's gonna get killed. My daughter went out there the other evening with some hedge clippers. Now, this is two blocks away from my house. She went out there and cut the Johnson grass down to where you can at least see a little better than you could. Yet the city has crews riding around that see this all day long, and it does not get taken care of. Yet, I've got a title of being a bitcher down here. Everybody in City Hall, I'm not everybody, because I said a lot of them knew, but most people have been in Lamarck for the city for years know me. And I'm not going to shut up. Uh, you can't quiet me like a member of council has told you, you can't quiet him. But I'm for this forensic audit. I want to know where this equipment went. I have in the past witnessed what was once a city of Lamarck tractor, front end loaded, box plate on the back, and a bush hog in the driveway to this person's house in Hitchcock of road material, that I was informed with a letter through the mail from a disgruntled employee that was fired, telling me that this person took all that material to their home on a Saturday in a city dump truck. And gave me several other driveway addresses, and I went and checked them, and sure enough, the work he told me that was done was done. I see the little red light. But again.
You, you can finish your statement, Mr. Payne.
But again, council, come election time, y'all come to us to vote for you. Yet y'all, quick, or say y'all, you're doing a talking up there, the mayor.
Excuse me?
Tell us that, you know, you work for us, really, you know? And I, I wouldn't want your job up there. Hell, no, I wouldn't. And these new councilmen, if I was one of them, I'd want that forensic audit, and I mean now.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Mrs. Sharon, is it Boot? Bolt? I'm sorry. Welcome, Ms. Sharon. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sharon Bolt. I live at 1905 Howell Avenue. I've lived in Lamarck for 45 years, and I, my home is over 65 years old, 64. 64-year-old house. I do want a forensic audit because this is not going to be the first time that Lamarck has needed to have a forensic audit. This is not the first time money has gone missing in our funds in Lamarck. And there's, if y'all haven't done anything wrong, there shouldn't be any reason why y'all shouldn't allow a forensic audit. And for you to call a man in Oregon to call over here who has, does not live in this county, that's a sin and a shame. I resent that as a resident of this, of this town. And I resent that my home is being represented like I live in South Shore Harbor. My taxes keep going up every year. I'm a, I'm a retirement. My husband's a retiree. He's dealing with two different types of cancer, so I can't tell you how much we have had to pay to M.D. Anderson. We don't have a lot of money to throw off for y'all's whims, for, for things y'all want to spend money on. Because we don't see it in Lamarck. Y'all, every time a road is built in Lamarck or, or redone in Lamarck, it's always Main Street, and it's Cedar, and it's Bayou Road. Our streets never get redone. I can't even remember the last time y'all redid Howell Street. And then the ones that y'all hired to do it, they didn't know what they were doing. Because the road is like riding on a roller coaster. They don't know how to do a level street. Furthermore, Howell Street runs where the, uh, bus, the, the buses for Lamarck go and other heavy, heavy equipment trucks that go down Howell Street, and they tear up that road. And then you've got the football games at the football stadium and people parking out by my house. And then you've got the buses when they leave the football stadium coming down Howell Street and Scott Street to get out of town. I've held a lot up, and I should have been over here. I've been watching a lot on YouTube, what y'all do. And I'm really disappointed. I'm really disappointed. All these years I've lived here and I paid taxes, and we have not seen our, our, our city properly being taken care of. Now, you've got a lot of elderly people that have lived in Lamarck for a long time.
Yes, ma'am. Can you, ma'am?
This year, y'all tried to raise my taxes on my land.
Ma'am.
You allowed the other gentleman.
And I let him, I, I let, I let, yes, ma'am. I'm just letting you know, finish your statement so that we can move on, but I'm gonna let you do that. Yes, ma'am.
I received from the appraisal district this year, my property is three quarters of an acre. It's always been around $8,800. But this year, instead of properly valuing my home, my land, it's now, y'all are raising it to $100,000 from $8,800.
Ma'am, ma'am. We're gonna have to end it.
Spanish.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that, Ms. Sharon. Jennifer, is it Hymo? Welcome, Ms. Jennifer. Name and address for the record. If you all see this, this red, uh, light go up, that means the three minutes is up. I'm going to try to let you finish the rest of that statement, right? Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Hymo. I live at 2319 Scott Street, Lamarck. Um, I personally feel that we need to have an audit with, with the money that we can account for. It's necessary for us to know what is being spent and where the money is going. I am a civil servant myself, 20-plus years with federal government. It's no surprise to me that audits come up all the time. And realistically, people look at audits as a bad thing, but it's to refine your processes, fill the holes where mistakes are being made, or come up with better processes for managing the funds within the town. So I don't see it as a negative thing, and I'm willing to spend my taxpayer dollars, however much they may cost, to move forward with an audit so that we can account for why our numbers are not matching. I did try to go back through the annual reports on y'all's city pages, and, um, I see that they are presented in a yearly fashion. Forgive me if I'm not aware if they are presented monthly, but personally, myself, um, it's a 221-page report per year, at least that I could, I could see from year to year.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it would be helpful, in my opinion, for us to have monthly, uh, monthly updates on budget versus actual expenses so that we can see how our money's being spent, the accomplishments that have been done for the month with the money that you proposed. Um, my last statement is, in conjunction with saying that things don't get done around here, yes, I agree with the statements made on the roads. Um, as long as I've lived here for 40-plus years, they haven't really gotten any better. And what I was able to research with other cities who are paying equivalent to which I want to raise the tax rates to, our city is not even close to being at that level, to be able to support that kind of tax rate. So I would not be in favor of paying any additional taxes to y'all, especially when we can't even account for the money that y'all have been given. My problem, my problem that I have with the money that I have been paying in taxes is, a year and a half ago, my husband and I called in to have, uh, services by the city to come out and take a look at our drain out at our house for sewer backing up. We called a second time to get a follow-up on, can we get somebody to come out? Because nobody did follow up. We were told that there were higher priorities, and this is a year and a half ago, and we still have not had anybody come by, and that's all I have to say.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mrs., I'm gonna try to pronounce it, Mrs. Serena Heilman? Did I butcher it? Welcome, Ms. Serena. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Serena Heilman, 1900 Palm in Lamarck.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm new to Lamarck. I've been here a year, and I've just been kind of sitting back and watching everything that's been going on. And I believe that we do need the forensic audit. Um, if there's nothing to hide, then we're gonna say thank the Lord. Um, if there's nothing to hide, then we're gonna say thank the Lord and let's move on. Um, if there's things that are found, then we move those people on and then the citizens can move on in the city. Um, I think that's exactly what we need to have. Um, I'm also not for the tax rate increase. I'm against that. And I do live on a street that was redone and all that did was created a racetrack. So be careful what you ask for because they speed from Maine to Ross and it's very dangerous.
Yes, ma'am.
Through there and we've got kids that play in the street. Um, so I appreciate the new road on Palm. Um, but I don't appreciate the speeders going from point A to point B all the time.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's all I have.
Thank you for that, Miss Serena. Mr. Ted Hill. Welcome, Mr. Ted. Uh, name and address for the record, please. And you also provided us with this document, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. My name is Ted Hill. I've lived at twenty-six oh two thirteenth Avenue North in Texas City. This may be a little bit dry for some of y'all, so bear with me. The title of this statement is, uh, the general purpose of a budget. The general purpose behind a budget is to anticipate what expenses may occur based on what services that must be provided by an agency. The funds needed to execute those services depends upon reasonable estimations of the cost of equipment. Supplies and man hours required to accomplish them. If there is confusion or doubt as to whether the estimations proposed in a budget are reasonable. There are two ways to support these estimations. One, compare to other agencies of similar size and circumstance. Or two, audit the actual past performance of the agency in question. Since the city of Lamarck has been an operating agency for many years now with a long financial history. An audit is the most practical and revealing means of analyzing the true needs for revenue proposed in its budget. In other words, the first thing that should occur. Is to identify and justify every penny it collected and spent during the last fiscal year. Then, when every cent has been accounted for and every operation scrutinized. The administrators are positioned to rethink the city's priorities. Or consider other means of funding the ones that already exist. In Lamarck's case, its budget is akin to a muddy bog. Where the financial terrain is obscure and unstable. No wonder no one at City Hall wants to go there because of the filth and corruption they might uncover in it. In my mind, there is no honest way to ask for tax increases of any kind. Unless and until the taxes currently being collected can be justified by the past performance of the city. That's all I've got for you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Thank you, Mr. Hill. Mrs. Judy, is it Sturgeon? Welcome, Miss Judy. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Judy Sturgeon. I live at thirty-one oh one Melody Drive. I've been here in Lamarck since nineteen ninety-three. I worked at the University of Texas Medical Branch for thirty years and for the Harris County Hospital District for another twelve. I have to tag on to Miss Jennifer's statement that in the real world, audits are normal. I mean, they're as normal as hiring people and firing people and making sure you've got supplies in the office. I've been the person performing the reviews and audits for both facilities. And as the manager of my departments, both in corporate compliance for Harris Health and for. The, uh, hospital coding and reimbursement division of the University of Texas Medical Branch. I've responded to audits from everybody in the universe that has a big name, including Medicare, Texas Medicaid, their managed care components, the University of Texas. Um, Medicare, Texas Medicaid, Blue Cross and the big four nationally recognized, uh, consulting auditors. You shouldn't be afraid of an audit. The city should be, and I would hope so. I don't pay much attention to politics. I attend my budget and my dogs and try to stay out of trouble. Fail. But, um, it should have regular intra-departmental reviews and interdepartmental audits and regular external audits. And anytime something comes up where money doesn't match up from left to right, there should be major external audits. And if it's anything significant like large money's missing. It should be a big auditor if you can't afford KPMG or Ernst &amp; Young. I think they got, I think they include Arthur Andersen now. You should fork over the money and get a forensic audit and find out what's going on because you're responsible. You're responsible for millions and millions and millions of dollars of public funds. And part of that management of that funds is responsibility to prove. That there is not mismanagement, there is not lax management and heaven forbid, there is nobody with their fingers in the pie that shouldn't be having their fingers in the pie. Probably my short version of my statement is that, uh, a forensic audit might be really expensive, but in my experience, which is pretty comprehensive. One serious, fair, uh, honest and impartial audit is a whole lot cheaper than one, one really good crook. And I think we owe it to our citizens to make sure that that's done in, uh, in reasonably fast order. Thank you for allowing me up here.
Thank you. Ms. Laura Devine, welcome, Ms. Laura. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Bell, city council members and community friends. I'm Laura McCartney Devine. I live at fourteen oh six Mary Lane. As you all know, I'm a longtime resident of Lamarck. I was born in Galveston County Memorial Hospital in Texas City, went to school in the best school district. In the state of Texas, I'm a nineteen eighty-three graduate. Go Coons. I ran for city council a few years ago against Joe Confion. However, because of health issues that were uncovered during the campaign, I pulled out of the race before the runoff election. And I tell you all this so you know I'm concerned for our city. I try not to only report issues in my neighborhood or town, but to also assist our city with a solution. During this last budget workshop, I've had many conversations with former and present city employees, residents of Lamarck. And have read through some of the social media posts online. It seems that once the budget is approved for the year, there are decisions made without city council's knowledge or approval. Items like raises and new positions should have to be approved through the budget process. If this can't be done, then it should at least be given to the city council to discuss and approve. Also, it gives the residents opportunity like this to voice concerns. When this is not done, like other line items of a budget, it tends to cause issues with city employees morale and balanced budgets. The city should also follow procedures and policies for buying and selling items. I would hope that bids are asked for if an item is over a certain amount of money. If that is not being followed, this needs to be addressed immediately. Also, when selling city property such as equipment, this should be done in a yearly city auction or other means that follows city policy. If this is not being followed, it should be addressed immediately too. In order to bring some confidence back to the Lamarck residents who are also taxpayers. I believe a forensic audit is crucial and justified. And like others have said before. It's not a bad thing to bring forth if there's a problem. I also believe there are areas, certain areas of the budget that needs to have a closer look into the trellis money. I'm asking you, the city council members of all districts and Mayor Bell. Do your due diligence and approve this item of a forensic audit. If issues are found during the forensic audit, let's learn from this and move forward together. Let's get rid of this dark cloud hanging over Lamarck so we can really make it a sunny day in Lamarck.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Clara Holcomb. Welcome, Ms. Clara. Name and address for the record, please.
Clara Holcomb, twenty-seven oh eight Magnolia Drive. Again, like everyone else, I come tonight to ask that a forensic audit be considered. You work for us. We paid the money. We want to know where every penny is going. I've had my time in accounting and that's important. Everything's got to balance. It's got to be accounted for. And the only other thing I had is three of the park employees came to J.C. Park about two weeks ago. We had major tree damage in a place in the soccer field behind there that no one could see. And those three men came out and worked for two and a half days, city employees, and they removed all that. And the neighbors and I thank you because now we see more than just beyond dead trees.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the people that picked them up in the front were totally unaware of all the damage that was back there.
Yes, ma'am.
So they did a good job and I thank them.
Thank you. Mr. Richard Holcomb, welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
Richard Holcomb, twenty-seven oh eight Magnolia Drive. Um, I'm up here to talk about the forensic audit. Um, I'll, I, I really believe that if. Nobody has anything to hide, they should welcome an audit. And if there's a crook among the council members or amongst city employees, they need to be brought to justice. Because I, we pay, we pay taxes and on seven different pieces of property. We pay some taxes every year. And, uh, between the crack houses I have to deal with in Texas City. And what I see over there going wrong where the police show up. I can see all kinds of stuff wrong and nobody goes to jail and they just slap their hand and let them go back in the house. They hadn't had water in over a year. Well, that house got tore down today, so I'm gonna celebrate tonight. But, uh, I, I really believe that if, if everybody is on the up and up, that they shouldn't care about a forensic audit. And as far as having, uh, Mr. Carlson call in from Oregon. Well, I do believe he had Mr. Lowery's council position for a while and he, he's the one that moved to Oregon. And he shouldn't be worried about what.
Mr. Holcomb.
What we're doing for a forensic audit if, unless he's got something to hide himself.
We, we get it. We get it. Let's, let's move on.
And all I can say is if Lamarck did get voted All-America City, I'd hate to see the runner-ups.
Mr. Holcomb, we were doing good. All right, all right, all right. Uh, Jason, I'm, I may butcher this. Willup? Mr. Jason, welcome. Name and address for the record.
My name's Jay Willup. I live at seven hundred Studio Drive. Uh, it's pretty tough facts to follow there. I don't have much to say. I moved over here in Lamarck when, uh, Hurricane Ike hit. I've lived here ever since. I've had very little problems with city service when I'm dealing directly with the city. But a short drive around the city, I mean, it don't take much to see that the money hadn't been allocated where it needs to be. Now, why that happened, I don't know. I don't know any of y'all well enough to level any accusations. But I do know after spending a little bit of time listening to YouTube recently, that, uh, a forensic audit is probably in order. I don't have any prepared remarks. I work more hours than exists most days. Uh, really all I got to do is to say that it's probably a good thing to find out where this money is, if it's in the right place or the wrong place. And I thank y'all for your time.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Carolyn Small. Welcome, Ms. Carolyn. Name and address for the record, please.
Um, my name's Carolyn Small. I live at eleven twenty-one Crown Street. Um, so I've already emailed most of you on the matter, but to refresh your memory, at the beginning of the summer, my son Vincent was accepted into the teen internship program. For the city of Lamarck, which was his very first job. It was very cool. Um, he'd been waiting for two years to be old enough. Uh, on June ninth, a sitting council member asked me on Facebook and I quote. Did your son get on the city of Lamarck because of your obedience and talking ignorant to me all the time? Was that your payment from mayor and council for being a good servant? And even more disturbing, when I told them to stop bringing up my children, they responded, oh no, what are you gonna do about it? And did I mention they tagged the city Facebook page in their accusation? I sent in screenshots and made complaints to the city. After hearing nothing for a month and a half, I decided to email all the council members not involved and tell them the story. I was told council has commenced addressing the issue and that was all that could be shared at the time and that was a month ago. So thankfully Vincent was sent to work at the police station where I felt like he was safe because. The person making the accusations has many followers and accusers and I didn't want anyone to go after him. He did an excellent job and you can ask anybody at the police station, so, um. And to clarify, in case anyone's unsure, no, Vincent did not get the job as a payment to me by mayor or city council. He got his own, on, it, on his own merit. Uh, Vincent used to come to the meetings with me about three years ago. Uh, he was homeschooled. His first meeting, Mr. Confion called him up and asked him, uh, what he thought of everything. He didn't say much. He was very shy. But, uh, we quit coming in person because the aggression. During the meetings, uh, took it from like a learning experience to like, it felt like Jerry Springer. It was scary. I didn't want to bring him to it. And, uh, I also want to say, by the way, Vincent would have made a great addition to the new junior council if I was comfortable enough to let him join. Uh, if you can't or won't protect teenagers from slander by an actual council member, and if there are no repercussions, then all those programs are doomed to fail. So right now, council is a serious problem. You have a member who has been advised that the words could cause potential lawsuits. And they sit behind that dais flirting out, I won't let you muzzle me, walking out during executive session, slandering a fellow member with an obsession that terrifies me for her safety. A censure may not do much, but it can set you apart, tell the victims of this relentless harassment that you hear them and don't condone it. Everyone behind that dais needs to maintain self-control and do what you were elected to do, which was to govern. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carolyn. Mr. Rashad Loftus, welcome Rashad. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Rashad Loftus, three oh nine Johnson Street. Got a couple of things here. Uh, one, I want to speak on the length of these meetings. They, they starting to last too long. We need to speed things up. People got things to do at night. Also too, uh, everybody's talking about money. You can't expect, and I'm speaking from a public, uh, public servant, uh, position here. I'm in public works as well. You can't ask for good service if you don't want to pay for it. It just don't work like that. You can't say I want my road paved, but you don't want to pay for it. You gotta spend money in order to get a good decent service. And mind you, if money is not being allocated properly, I get it. Cause that's a problem in itself. But don't ask for something that you're not willing to pay for. Okay, that's just my opinion only. Some of you might agree with me. Okay, this forensic audit, I'm actually tired of hearing about it. So my position on the forensic audit is let's get it done, get it over with. If anybody stole any money, send their ass to jail, excuse me. But that's just the way I see it. I'm just gonna be frank about it. I personally don't think not one person on this council has stole a damn dime. If they did, there's place for them. So whatever the audit costs, y'all want to pay for it, divvy it up. There's equipment that they need too. Divvy it up. You want your roads paved? There's a lot of things that this council needs, this, this, this city needs. And I want to see it happen. There's a lot of things that's going, that's wrong in this city. I see it every day. I turn it in every day. City manager here for me almost daily. And Ms. Laura Devine, what you said about, um, turning in things and offering solutions as well. That's what all of you all need to start doing. I hear a lot of this here. No, no, and I'm not saying you don't.
Let's not, let's not have an engaging conversation.
I'm not saying you don't. I just wanted to thank her and agree.
Yes, ma'am. I'm just.
No, no.
Yes, ma'am. I, I get that, Ms. Laura. I'm, I'm, I'm. Mr. Loftus, Mr. Loftus, look at us.
Yes, sir.
All right.
No, I just wanted to her to know that I agree with what she said.
I, I get that and I think she gets that now too.
We ha- we have to offer solutions as.
Absolutely.
Viable solutions, not just viable complaints. Cause a lot of people offer viable complaints just all the time, no solutions. And that's a problem in itself from citizen standpoint, but I just want y'all to understand. And that's a problem in itself from citizen standpoint. But I just want y'all to understand that we have to be willing to pay for certain things. And if you don't want to pay for it, stop asking for it.
Thank you, Mister Loftus. Robert Mitch Titch, welcome Robert. Name and address for the record please.
Robert Mitch Titch, twenty four North Curlew.
Welcome Robert.
To speak about this budget and the ethics. This budget was the worst I've ever seen. When, when a budget is presented and for the public's view also and you see entire packets for police and fire with, without anything in there. Everything that was requested in and it's not in there. And yet packets are given to the council daily and they change. And the numbers didn't add up. And then all of a sudden you start finding numbers. But the problem is, is that the state in order to provide taxpayer relief, that law puts you at a no new revenue tax of thirty nine cents. And that allows you three and a half percent growth of revenue over the previous year. But yet this budget was built on a forty one cent tax rate. And it was built that way from the beginning. But yet, now that you find the other money, oh yeah, we could do the thirty nine percent. Well, three council members voted for that tax increase. And without the monies that were all of a sudden they appear, without the budget being any semblance of a reasonable budget being presented that somebody could understand and is needed. And a forensic audit is just not numbers. It's procedures and how things are handled department wise also. It's needed. Now for the ethics, what you do here tonight. Mark my words, it's going to cost a lot of money. You've seen it go through in other cities. And there is plenty of ethics complaints to go around. I have my own. And if I have to, I'll issue my own and they will not be in an executive session. They will be very, very public. But we need that forensic audit. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Mrs. Taquisha Angel Murphy, welcome, Miss Murphy. Name and address for the record please.
Yeah, living twenty six oh four Cedar Drive here in Lamarck. I'm here basically to advocate for my, for my fellow neighbors and friends. I moved here to Lamarck about ten years ago, living off eighteen nineteen Delian Street. And I found a community that I was not expecting. Lamarck has been a beautiful place for me to live. So much that I decided to buy a home when I've never considered it in my whole entire life to do that. This issue with the the tax rate is causing some concerns. When we lost our schools, Lamarck was hit with some unexpected tax expenses that basically hurt a lot of my neighbors. Some of them are not here anymore. And now we're dealing with tax rates with the appraisal district. Our city is this is busting right now. For the residents who have been here and paid their taxes. I remember Lamarck when I moved here. It was amazing. Even when I moved to Cedar Street, I couldn't believe a parade was going down my street. A nice parade with our schools and everything. I want that back. And so, and these citizens are willing to pay for the Lamarck they thought they were paying for. A forensic audit is a great way to start at ground zero and get that done. Find out where everything's going. Put all the money in the pockets it needs to be in and get the city back to where that this Lamarck I moved to. I moved to a loving Lamarck, no matter who my neighbors were. And many of my neighbors know me now. And they're like going, "First I was the chicken lady, then I was the cat lady, then I was the dog lady, now I'm the goat lady." And as you well, some of y'all know that I am a civic, a public servant also. I'm a public servant because I believe in my public.
Yeah.
I believe they need some transparency. I believe they need a break. I need them to see the money that they paid their for however long they've lived here. It doesn't matter how long you lived here because people who move here now, they're paying those rates that we probably would have never seen in Lamarck in twenty fourteen. With the new revenue coming, coming in, maybe that can be a buffer until everybody can get a resting place from all the changes that have happened in Lamarck since I have been here. I wasn't here forty years, fifty years or ju- or just one year, but just in the time that I've been here. I've been through a lot of cities in my life and so on. I'm a military brat. I'm also a service member. Basically nowhere, not very long. And it was not hard for me to leave. It's hard for me to leave Lamarck. Me, uh, it's hard for me to leave Lamarck. I love Lamarck. And I plan to do as much service as I can for Lamarck because they treated me very well. And I wanted to stay that way. Forensic audit to balance the board, lower these taxes until we can find a common ground to get Lamarck fixed and rejuvenated.
Yes ma'am. Thank you. Again, we want to thank each and every one of you for your time uh, and for your consideration. Certainly, the council has heard every word of your comments. Item six minutes. Counsel, uh, Mister Booth, without objection, we'll take all of these together. I'll read them all and then we can take them all in one uh, one action. Six one, special city council minutes. Eight six, two thousand twenty four. Six two, special city council minutes. Eight five, two thousand twenty four. Six three, special city council minutes. Eight one, two thousand twenty four. Six four, special city council minutes. Seven nineteen, two thousand twenty four. Six five, regular city council minutes. Three eleven, two thou- two thousand twenty four. Uh, six, six, special uh, council minutes. City council minutes, excuse me. Three eleven, two thousand and twenty four. I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel, are there any omissions, any corrections? Hearing none, we will call for the vote. All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Counsel, uh, without objection, we'll move past seven one. I believe staff is not ready uh, for seven one to move forward at this time. We'll bring this back. It is not time sensitive. We'll bring it back next meeting. Uh, eight two, uh, uh, excuse me, seven two. Uh, public hearing, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget regarding the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five proposed budget. We're closing our regular scheduled meeting at?
Seven sixteen.
Seven sixteen. Uh, and we are opening our public hearing at seven sixteen. Are there any persons uh, with us tonight online or in person wishing to speak to item seven two? Mister Mitch Titch. May approach.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Uh, Robert Mitch Titch, twenty two, twenty four North Curlew. Um, in the budget, one of the things we looked at, uh, you see a lot of professional services. A lot of professional services, but there's no delineation as far as what those are and what's being lumped in there. And that's another reason for that audit, you know, you're, you should have everything listed out exactly what things were spent on, whether it's security cameras, whether it's legal services, whether it's consulting fees, whatever it is, it's not just professional services. You, you can't operate a business like that. You know, I've been involved in budgets where our last budget of, in the last year that I was employed, our one department was over one billion dollars. Now, our budget started off where we were given a ten percent cut and we had to figure out how to live with it. You know, we weren't, we didn't have taxpayer money. But you have got to delineate everything that was spent. And, and that's not there. And it just, you know, you, you're missing too many holes. And, and without this trust, you put us as a committee on a public service building, you, you put us with two strikes against us. You know, trying to get a bond pass through and the people can't trust what is being done with the budget and the money and where it's at. You know, how do you build a plan to replace roads or anything? But you've got to be more detailed in everything that is being spent. And it's got to just be out there. Whether you like it or not. And that goes from travel, not just travel. Oh, we spent so many thousands of dollars on travel. How much was hotels? How much was per day? You know, how, what did we spend there? Who spent, you know? Let's look at it. It's operations, reviews. I have another thing for your budget that may help. In in business life, we would do audits, but not necessarily on finances every time. We may, we may go take a trip down to South Texas to, to take care of a whole director's district. And we're going to review their entire operations. Why is this one director not performing up to the standards of the other? Are they not visiting their personnel on the job sites? You know, are the personnel not getting out of the work centers on time? There's a million things that you can review to improve your efficiency. And, and you can appoint citizens. Each one of you could appoint something and y'all could make two or three different committees to review certain departments. And that will go a long way because now you're bringing in the people to help review the operations of the city and you will improve your trust. That's all I got to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Mitch Titch. Any other person wishing to speak to item seven two? Mister Loftus, you're recognized. You may approach.
Okay, um, so I, I, I'm really just at a point to where I'm gonna have to agree with a lot of the things that I've heard here tonight as far as auditing, budgeting, and being, being a department head myself in this same type setting, things need to be accounted for. We, we, we have to be, I'm a citizen here as well, so let me say that too. We have to be more fiscally responsible with the money. And that's not to say that anybody's doing anything wrong because I don't know that, but to, to, there was a, a term just used, a dark cloud perhaps. Maybe it is, maybe it ain't. But we need to, if it is, let's remove it. Let's just put it all out there. Let the people see it. So this can slowly go away and people can have trust in, in the government. Because we all want to trust our government. Department heads want to be trusted. Hell, at my job, I damn sure want to be trusted. When I'm dealing with those people money. Every time we spend something in my department, there's a receipt that goes in the book. One of my employees don't put that receipt in the book, it's a problem. Because I don't know that you spent it. And when they ask me, why was it spent? I don't know. So let's move forward with being more responsible with city money. And again, that's not to say that anything's missing because I'm not accusing nobody of nothing because that ain't what I'm doing. What I am asking for is more accountability. If, you know, if that can be improved, improve on it. I see a lot of stuff on the day to day that I know ain't being done right. And Caesar hears from me, Miss Nancy hears from me, you hear from me. Ross, you hear from me. I ain't got to you yet, Mister Lowery, but you coming. You up next. But the public do want more accountability. I want it. And I'd be lying if I sit here and told you I don't. So let's move toward that and make Lamarck better than it is right now. I love this city. I'm pretty sure everybody here, because if you didn't, you probably be trying to move up out of here. Some of them may be moving, but I don't know. I ain't going nowhere. But I am asking this council to let's do better. Let's all be better. Let's all be more professional and, you know, wh- what y'all were elected to do, what you were hired to do. Let's do that. Let's start right there. If we can't start that, then we done already lost this game. That's it.
Thank you, Mister Loftus. Any other persons wishing to speak to item seven two? Mister Hill, you are recognized. Ma'am, did you want to speak as well? Okay, I recognize you. I'm sorry.
The uh, thing that's often overlooked is when you're talking about audits and budgets and all this kind of stuff, really what you're tempted to do is get leverage over what you can do with the money you've got. And if you if you know how much money you got, you can make a better decision on what you can leverage. You can get a better deal from vendors and, and service providers. You know, you say, well, you're charging me half a million dollars, but this guy over here will do it for four hundred thousand. So same quality, cheaper price. But if you don't know how much the job is going to cost or what it cost the last time you did it, you, you're, you don't know. You, you don't have the leverage that you'd like to have. Uh, so that's the upside of budgeting and auditing. It's not the citizens are not looking for blood. They're not looking for, you know, uh, running somebody out of town. They, they want repentance. They want cleanliness. They want uh, efficiency. And having the budget gives you the framework that you can use to hang the rest of your operation on that can be explained and can be defended and can be, hey, look, you know, we had a million dollars to spend last year, but we were able to leverage it and spend over seven hundred fifty thousand. So there's, there's a surplus now because we were, we were smart. We, we planned ahead and that's, that's the thing. To, I just want to encourage you. Don't, don't get scared of wrangling with numbers and don't be afraid to display because this is an accomplishment. You can say, hey, look at here. I, this is what I did for y'all this last year. And I know for sure that we, here's where the dollars went and this is the value we got from it. So, you know, don't, don't get defensive. Don't take it the wrong way that this is a tool. This is a pry bar. This is a, this is a winch to pull this whole process out of the, out of the swamp. And, and I, I'll, I'll leave it at that. But I agree with most of what's been said here. I think that we just give yourselves the tool. Give yourselves the the leverage that you need to do your job as well as can possibly be done while you're here with us. You're not going to be city council members forever. But give yourself something that you can really be proud of. And it starts with, you, you gotta, you gotta know the numbers. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mister Hill. Miss Sharon, you may approach.
I'm calmer. Now, um, about the budget, um, I, the, the budget sheet, I think should not only give like a lump sum total under a certain line, you know, of uh, services. But I think there should be an itemized accounting of what that lump sum is going to cover. I think that is transparency. Just putting a lump sum number doesn't tell us anything of where that money's going to be spent. And the other thing I want to say is that I tried, I have the Lamarck City app. And I tried going on it so I could try and pull up a budget. So I could see the budget. And when I did, it was in a foreign language. I couldn't, I couldn't read it. Uh, I don't know what language it was, but I only speak English, maybe a little Spanish. But I don't know what language that was, but I, I couldn't read it. And so I wasn't able to go as a citizen on that app and pull that information up. And I don't know why that happened, but I wanted to let y'all know.
Yes ma'am.
I don't know if somebody changed the language on the app uh, it by accident, you know? But uh, you know, it's important for us, you know, y'all provided the app for us. And like, you know, I can see now, I need to come to I can see now, I need to come to more council meetings uh, in person. I've been watching on YouTube and I've seen things and I, I built up a lot of things that I've never shared with y'all before.
Yes, ma'am.
I will say one good thing. This doesn't have to do with the budget. But it has to do with the fact that for the first time, I feel, I live in District C and I feel like I have a council member that listens to us. He gave us his personal number where we can talk personally to him when we have a problem. He has, I've seen him after barrel, uh, go out and help people in his, in his district of cutting up trees, helping people, uh, especially older people that, you know, lost trees and can't afford to pay people thousands of dollars to cut up trees. And he provided his services. This is the first time in all the years that I have lived in Lamarck where a council member has given direct access for us to have direct access to him. And this has meant a lot to me. I finally feel like I'm being represented.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, I want to share that with y'all as a taxpayer, uh, that I do have something good to say. Uh, that I've seen, you know, a change. I wish more of y'all would give your personal cell phone numbers where we can talk directly to y'all because when we send a text message, uh, anybody could be reading that text message. We don't know if Mayor Bell, if you're, if you're having access to see what's going on or whether somebody else is reading it. And we're not, you know, we need to have that direct one-on-one contact where we can know that we're being heard and coming to the meetings. And I, I understand that's my responsibility and I intend to start using it. And so I can be heard. And, uh, you know, I appreciate, you know, the time that y'all give as council members, uh, you know, to work in, in Lamarck.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I think the people just want fairness and equity in financial equity, uh, that we receive what we're paying for. That's all I can say about the budget, but I do think a more itemized listing in the budget would be appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. Sharon. Any other persons wishing to speak to item seven two? One more time, any other persons wishing to speak to item seven two? Mr. Booth, do we have to close and open again or can we move to item seven three? We're in a public hearing, yes.
My understanding is we opened it for both of them, so you can just move right.
Very good. Any person online or, uh, before us here today wishing to speak to item seven three? Fiscal, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five tax rate regarding a proposed property tax rate of uh, point four one eight zero five eight per one hundred of taxable value for tax year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Any persons wishing to speak to item uh, seven three? I see Mr. Mitchich and I see Mr. Loftus. Mr. Mitchich was first last time. Mr. Loftus, you have the honor to go first this time. And then we'll follow up, Mr. Mitchich.
Okay, so this is just a question. Forty one cent, thirty nine cent. What kind of money is that? Where, where we at on that?
Are you looking for a point of affirmation? Yeah. calculation? Do you have the percentage? I mean, the, the, uh, the dollar distance? Is that okay, Mr. Booth?
Yes, Mayor. The approximate difference between the two, and I'm going just by just quick math, roughly, uh, shade under a hundred ninety thousand dollars per penny. So in this case, the difference is roughly three hundred eighty six for the forty one. Um, the difference between thirty nine and forty one.
It's three hundred eighty six thousand dollars?
Three hundred eighty six thousand.
Three hundred eighty six thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
And that's divided up amongst all the taxpayers.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I think I can put in a little bit on that. I think I'm, 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 I'm down for the forty one cent because we might get a little bit more city services. We might get some equipment, so I might vote for that. But I just wanted to know what the number was.
What the number was, the distance. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mitchich.
Thank you, Mayor Council, Robert Mitchich, twenty four North Corleone. I still support the state law for the no new revenue tax minimum, which is at thirty nine cents. And that establishes the tax relief or helps establish that tax relief what it was designed for, for the public. We can keep chipping away at it, but it doesn't help the public. And there's a lot of people out there who are hurting. Have you heard some, from some people and some stories tonight? There's a lot more out there. If you want to trust the people, follow that law. You've already made up more money that you found than that difference between forty one cents and thirty nine cents. I would suggest following the law at the thirty nine cents when you vote for this tax rate. It's trust. And we need that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchich. Okay, we have one online wishing to speak to item seven three. And then, uh, I do believe that I see a person out and I'm gonna try one more time. Ms. Frida, right? Ms. Frida, I keep, let's, uh, let's, let's listen to Ms. Ginger and then Ms. Frida will come behind Ms. Ginger. You have the floor, Ms. Ginger.
Thank you. Um, I do not want the taxes raised. I'm tired of paying higher taxes for nothing. Yes, we are on the new side of Lamarck, but that doesn't mean anything. My water pressure is horrible and my house is eight years old. So no, I do not want a tax rate increase. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, Councilman Frida Hardman, again. I would like to say this. I am so impressed that I seen a YouTube or heard a YouTube where our mayor did not want an increase. He said it was not necessary. So first of all, not only did our mayor say it, but I feel like it's necessary that we don't do this because first of all, we don't have no transparency what we, what we paid for last time. Now, if it was necessary, why would our leader personally announce that it was not necessary? And that's what all I have to say. Thank you for the YouTube.
Thank you, Ms. Frida. Any other persons, uh, wishing to speak to item seven three? Yes, ma'am. You may approach, Mrs. Serena.
Serena Heilmann, again, nineteen hundred Palm. I'm against the tax increase. Um, I think that we need to go through the audit first and let's follow, look and see where the money's been going. And if everything's good, then maybe next time when you come to us with the tax increase, I might vote for it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Name and address? I, I know you, but we don't, we need this for the record.
My name is Adriana Garcia and I live at two two oh nine Carriage Lane. So I'd like to mirror what that lady just said. You know, I don't mind paying for things, you know? I've been here in Lamarck since nineteen ninety seven, um, because God said, come to Lamarck. That's telling me, and I'm not moving until God tells me to go. You know, my husband, he jokes and he's like, let's go, let's go back home because we have property. We have it eight, eight acres in Angleton. And, uh, I'm like, have you heard God say go? And he's like, no. I said, I'm not moving until I hear from the Lord. But anyway, besides that, um, I also, I don't mind paying for things, but I'd like to see where the money is going. So the budget, uh, you know, all of that. And I, I don't want anything increased until we see what is going on. Y'all, y'all understand?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, and then we can vote about it later or whatever. That's it. That's it.
Thank you. Any other persons? Ms. Laura?
Y'all have to repeat my address?
No, I, we had it, we got it the first time. Yes, ma'am.
I also want to say I am not in, uh, agreement with raising our taxes. Um, I think we need to have the audit first. Let's get our house in order first. Um, that will give the trust to the taxpayers, the community so that our police can have a new building. Right now, the people don't trust our administration. And if you put a bond out there for us to vote on, you're, you, it's already gonna fail. Because they don't trust. Where's the money? So let's get our house in order and let's get ready to build a police station.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Ms. Sharon, now normally we don't do this, but you can come on back. I'm teasing. No, you can, you can come back. I, I'm just having fun with you. Welcome. Yes, ma'am. I hope so. I hope so. I hope so.
Um, I think, I agree with the others. I think that the forensic audit, audit should take place first and see where we are. And then, uh, go on from there where, you know, we know where we stand uh, with our budget. I don't think there should be another increase. Uh, as it is, like I said before, my land value has been raised uh, from eight hundred, eight thou, eight, eight thousand eight hundred to one hundred thousand dollars. I'm already gonna see an increase in my, my ta, uh, my taxes that I've got paid on my property this year. Uh, also, on June twenty eighth, um, a drunk driver crossed over our ditch and hit our gas meter and destroyed our gas meter and gas was pouring out. And, uh, two months later, I still don't have gas service. And, uh, Center Point Energy came out, uh, five police cars came out that morning and two, two fire trucks to, to get on each end of the street to keep cars from coming into the area. And I, I don't know what time this drunk driver did this damage. Uh, they were not able to, uh, remove their vehicle from the ditch and they left out on foot. And, uh, that's another situation I'm gonna have to deal with regarding them. But my concern is, is that, you know, I've had to pay a nine hundred and forty dollar, a gas bill from what that person did. And I had to pay three hundred and thirty, three hundred and fifty dollars to Center Point Energy for them to relocate my meter, which still hasn't been done yet. And I've had to pay a plumber uh, seventeen hu, over seventeen hundred dollars for them to prepare my line for a new meter. I don't need new taxes to be put on me. You know, it, we are hurting. And, and I'm not the only one, I know. Uh, every person that is retired is hurting from all of the inflation that's gone on in the country. Uh, groceries going up double. Uh, if you even bother to be able to afford to go to a restaurant, their prices have all increased. You know, life is not like it was before. I mean, we are living in different times now. And I know the city's expenses are probably increasing from the, the inflation. I get that, but I still think that we need to have that forensic audit and find out where, where, uh, lost monies are at because that haven't been utilized or we don't know how it's been utilized. You know, there's, you can't, you can't increase something when you don't know what's going on. And we need to have, we need to have, uh, an accurate accounting of where our budget really stands for last year. And, uh, and deal with that. And maybe, you know, God willing, that we have a new president uh, that is of sound mind, uh, to be able to run the country that can deal with the inflation, then maybe we can get to a point when the inflation gets dealt with where we can be able to pay taxes again. But right now, I don't see it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
The thing I would like to, um, sort of reiterate about the, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Jennifer Heimel. Um, the thing I would like to, to bring up again, and, and I consider myself to sort of be like middle of the road in terms of age. I did grow up in this city. Um, so I see that a lot of our community members are older. Um, as well as we've got newer, younger families moving in. The thing that concerns me most is what kind of a city do we want to be? Do we want to be a big booming city like League City? Where the population is so overgrown, we're all, I mean, as you drive up forty five, you see nothing but big city booms. We have very little small town feels in the locational areas. And what I, what I love most about Lamarck is that it is priced affordable for, for people who are either in lower income brackets or cannot afford to pay. I've been shopping for a house now for two and a half years. And the cost of living to go buy a home is not what it once was before twenty twenty. So we still need to have a community that will offer affordable housing for people. And if you keep raising the taxes, it's gonna price people out of here. And I, I do believe that we need to kind of get control over what we, what we currently have on our books first. But I also think too that being a, um, an aged category of a person that is on social media, I follow many of our city webpages in the local areas, Texas City, Dickinson, Brunswick, all over the place. And when people start talking about moving to local cities, they'll come on the talk of Lamarck page. And they want to know, is this a good area to live? Unfortunately, the reputation Lamarck holds is crime being heavily on the spectrum and also just the city not being ran well. And so it deters people from wanting to move here. I think we need to try to regain the trust again in the people first so that people will want to move here. The, the budget being aside of things. I think we just need to help our reputation build back so that our city can have that appearance of what we want it to be. But I, I personally appreciate the small town feel of Lamarck because everywhere else you're starting to become more of a metropolitan, you know, city-ish area. So, um, I hope that we can keep it the way it is, you know? I'm not against, um, paying for additional stuff in the future, but I think we need to get control of what we have first and repair where we're at before we start booming major in, inflammation of, of taxes. Because we want people to move here first. And I think with more growth of people moving to our locations, then we can consider raising the taxes maybe in order to be able to provide more services for the community.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Any other persons wishing to speak to item seven three? One more time for the record. Any other persons wishing to speak to item seven three? Hey, again, thank you for your comments. The council has heard each and every one of them. Uh, and preferably we will take those comments into consideration. Item eight, old business. Again, we're moving fast. Thank you for that. What time are we closing the public hearing?
Seven forty seven.
Seven forty seven. We're reopening. Thank you for that, Mr. Nats. The regular meeting at seven forty seven. And now we are going past the item eight one. Uh, and to item eight two, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget regarding the, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five proposed budget. Council, I am opening this for comments, uh, discussion. And well, it does not, it doesn't say possible action, Mr. Booth. Uh, we are discussing, we're making comments. Are we allowed to, to take action? We are discussing, we're making comments. Are we allowed to to take action?
Item eight two?
Eight two. Just says regarding. Aid one, the administration pulled. It's not ready.
It's missing the items presented to council.
Let's uh let's 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 be safe and discuss and make comments and 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 request to act next meeting. Council, if we have anything that we'd like to act on, we have to request it, and it will be placed on the agenda for next meetings. We're opening eight two now. Council, first thoughts regarding fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Who's first?
I just need point information on the, we need to clarify the the time period. We're gonna have to have a special meeting because we have this set by what date here?
The time period for the budget and tax. So
No, 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 for the, we're on eight two.
Yes.
Not the budget impact.
Well, impact this budget, yes. But we will do ordinances for these on the ninth. So that would be the next meeting. And y'all guys are gonna discuss this again tomorrow in a workshop. We are required by charter to be done with the budget by September twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh.
Yes.
Twenty seventh. All right. Thanks.
That it. Counsel, first thoughts, concerns, questions for the administration about the proposed budget?
I think we personally have beat the budget up. That's a dead horse for us, but to put this out to especially my sailors back there, our budget is a soup sandwich, and if you don't understand what the soup sandwich level of is, the best soup sandwich you can get is a sourdough bowl with some clam chowder in it. It doesn't leak anywhere. We're somewhere mid-tier. We've at least toasted the bread some, so we're working on it. It's hopefully be done tomorrow. So, yeah, it we understand all your concerns that that have been expressed.
Yeah, is it my turn?
Yes, yes. Anyone who's ready.
So the question, the difference was three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, correct, between the forty-one cents and the thirty-nine cents, correct?
Uh, yes, Councilwoman, it is.
And I know you were still working on the budget, and we were still working on on franchise fees and also game room ordinances.
Right.
And and I know we set it at forty-one because we knew we couldn't go up above that. And so we've heard from some of the residents, we've heard from some of, I've heard from some of mine who have some concerns as well as for streets and roads and sewers and the water break leaks that we've had every week, seems like since with the construction. But tomorrow, when we do the workshop, we need to see about that three hundred and eighty-five thousand, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Let let's be clear, the SB two law that everyone is talking about has to do, because I because I heard what she said about appraisals and and, you know, all of that, that comes from the appraisal district. They actually set the taxes. And now there's no cap. There used to be a three to five percent cap that our appraisal boards, our county appraisal boards could put on there, but now there's no cap. So that and that the appraisal board is the the organization that actually gives the cost of your homes. SB two was designed so that we could offer some property tax relief. And so now this admini- this council is asking questions about the difference between the forty-one cents and the no new tax revenue rate of thirty-nine cents. I want you to go home and research this because this is this has big repercussions, the SB two law. And then the SB two law in some instances is hurting small cities. We have streets that need to be fixed. We have water towers that need to be replaced so that, as Ginger has said, I want my water pressure to be better. My home is eight years old. I've been talking about water pressure in Lamarck since nineteen ninety-seven. When are we going to fix some of our infrastructure bonds? And I would say this to District A residents and my constituents that I represent. We have got to fix our infrastructure prob- issues. If we do thirty-nine cents, we've gotta have an infrastructure bond to fix our issues in our city. So if we do thirty-nine or even forty cents, we've got to still fix the issues with the sewer backups. The the roads that need, my road needs to be fixed in Meadow Lane. My my child back there can raise your hand and tell you our road is like a lunar moon. And we want it fixed. The residents want their streets to be fixed. But we also have to be realistic and know and and educate educate everyone about. I remember what what did you tell us about how much it was to actually pave a road? I know Jefferson and Brown in my district is horrible.
Yes, ma'am. So it depends on material with what you're doing for certain things, but right now the estimates for Jefferson are well over a million, just just to do
Well, just just those two trees are one million dollars.
Just Jefferson is probably gonna be over a million dollars. We can't say for sure because we have to put it out for bid and so forth, but yes, ma'am.
And we have many roads, not as bad as Jefferson. Jefferson's probably one of the worst roads that we have. But we do have roads that needs to be fixed. At a thirty-nine cents tax rate, do you think that can be done? Or a forty cents tax rate?
Respectfully, Councilwoman, unless we went to go a bond route and use the difference of those funds to start paying back those bonds, respectfully, I don't think a seventy cent tax rate might get us where we need to be very honest with you.
So we would have to have an infrastructure bond?
You would need it. Right now, the difference of three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars is not gonna do a whole lot when it comes to fixing a bunch of streets. And I just, that's just basing on the economics of where you are. So average street, even if it's gonna be asphalt versus cement and depending on the needs and are 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 we doing just tipsy or how deep we're going? We're talking about a lot. You know, you you just spent on the county bond project over four million dollars and you only got fourteen streets done. So to put that in comparison, somewhere longer than others, right? So the length of the street matters. And how much subwork is done. But yes, ma'am, just answer your question. One or the other is not gonna get all your street problems resolved. One versus the other is not gonna get all your water problems resolved.
Right.
It's just about what you want to do to allocate for
Yes, ma'am. And I know we had asked you about presenting a three, three to five-year forecast plan, I know. So that we can show this is what we're gonna try to do this year. This is what we're gonna try to be to have year two, correct? And year three. The other thing, if if residents are having issues getting a budget, say, as she said, the budget, she she used the apps and came out another another language, can they come up to the council and get a copy of the budget? I mean, to the city, you get a copy of the budget?
They can always do so. And actually, I asked staff to please get with her here before she leaves and make sure we can find out what happened because many folks have been able to obtain the budget. So whatever, and I'm not sure it's been resolved, just like, well, I've been up here. But that could have been a simple translation of something within the system, but a lot of folks were able to see the budget online.
Okay, I have some other questions, but I need to look up something real fast. So go ahead, Mayor.
Anyone else?
All right. One more. Are we talking about two and three right now?
No, we're just on two.
Two?
Yeah.
I'll wait till
You wait. Anyone else?
This community doesn't have a tax problem. It has a spending problem. If the city manager would like, and if if I'm allowed to, I I'm willing to show you my my expertise as a business owner of multiple businesses I've had in the state of Texas, the state of Washington, the state of Ohio. I will come down here and I I can show you where we can make cuts to to make thirty-five cents worth. We don't have a tax problem. We have a spending problem. And a forensic audit will help organize those things. But that that's where I'm at. We don't have a tax problem. We have a spending problem.
Anyone else? I will say couple of things. Items of note that would help us to understand some of the allocations of our our budget, how they are slightly different from cities around us. A lot of people don't know that the Lamarck, the city of Lamarck has i- its own paid fire department. There are actually only three paid fire departments in our county. They are the city of Galveston, city of Texas City, and the city of Lamarck. That's three plus million, millions of dollars in our budget that have to be four, excuse me, I'm sorry about that, Chief. It's four now. Chief Mayorman on the back reminded me, we're at about four million dollars in our fire department budget. That that stretches our dollar beyond its limits and its ability to stretch. And consequently, consequently, we find in the lack of repair to our streets, some of the other amenities that we fail to realize, some of the levels of accountability that we struggle to achieve. Those things can be found in the fact that we we have limited resources because there is more to do in Lamarck than in other cities. Having said that, having having said that, I am I am disappointed in the budget that was presented to us. I am disappointed in the process that was used to present the budget. The budget had a lot of, the budget presentation, the budget book had a lot of errors and omissions in it and caused great concern among member of members of this council as well as a concern among members of our community. A lot of that has to do with, unfortunately, the fact that our city manager is a new, a young city manager. And our finance director is also new to her position of leadership, and they're new working together. And there is a lot of working through things that have to take place. But that's not the people of Lamarck's fault, nor is it the people of Lamarck's concern, right? The people of Lamarck deserve a proposed budget that is thorough, that's clear, that's accurate so that the that their representatives can decide based on accurate numbers. That did not happen this year. Again, I do understand that a lot of it has to do with just the nature of the team. But because of that, because of that, I cannot support the proposed budget as it stood the last time we we had a conversation, the last budget workshop. And I think I told you that. I I was not inclined to support it. I believe that we can get the majority of our needs met with a thirty-nine cent budget, right? With a lower budget. If if we're smart and we use other revenue streams. So again, I'm not gonna, to to Councilmember Ross's point, I'm not gonna beat a dead horse, but I did want to share with each and every one of you that I have the same concerns. I don't believe that there's anything criminal or nefarious going on within our government. I just think that there is a level of competency that we have not yet reached, and and we have work to do in that area. And so I'll leave it at that. Again, I believe Mr. Garcia is trying his best to resolve a lot of these issues. But again, as Mayor, I am disappointed in in the budget presentation thus far. Any any further comments? Mr. Mr. Mayor Potem?
I I see our finance director is not here tonight, so so I guess I defer to you.
I I am online. Hello, I am here.
Yes, just by way of by way of using an opportunity, I'm a bit of the of the nerd here, I guess you say, but but I I look at these numbers, actually, that study them. We have, we talk about this increase of at the forty-one cent.
Thank you for that.
Forty-one cents. That's the first time anybody said they couldn't hear me. That's but thank you. The at the forty-one cent, you indicated that that was represented and an increase over the collections, the collections, to be clear, of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars approximately, three hundred and eighty-six thousand is the number that was indicated.
Mayor Potem, so the number of three eighty-six is the difference in funds that could be allocated differently between a thirty-nine cent versus a forty-one cent budget?
But it also is an indication of of additional income, correct?
Yes.
All right, that's
Yes, yes, sir.
It's in from from the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five, we get the amount that we collected plus an additional at forty-one, plus three hundred and eighty-six thousand. And in from that three eighty-six, the additional amount, if if we just focus in on that amount, and we have to understand in city government, in city government, in city finance, and there's a separate course you haven't been to yet, Joseph. So when you get to that course, matter of fact, I think I'm the only one in council that's taken that course. You took it, Mr. Garcia, and the finance director. But in that amount, there's a maintenance and operations side that's allocated to maintenance and operations. That's to say that pays for the the electricity that goes on here, the salaries, the keeping the lights on, the vehicles, the police, the fire personnel, all our personnel costs. And then also from that, there's the the interest and the sinking fund. That's to say, that's our debt service as when it with anything, let's call it our 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 credit card charges, make it simple, right? We have to pay a cer- certain amount every month for for that part. So you take that amount and you split it between the two. And proportionately, proportionally now, right? Proportionally. And you do that with all the different rates, the the forty-one, the forty, and the thirty-nine, okay? And so in terms of the budget work, yeah, I agree with the mayor. We all have agreed with that. We've got some challenges there. We're we're arting those out, new 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 individuals, the new different different individuals not present to assist in this effort as well, too, that historically were involved in in this process and their unwillingness to work in that in that regard, too. So having having said that, the the we were presented with a very, very, and I thank councilperson, Councilmember Ross for doing this, is from the police department, from the fire department, a a very precise and extensive list of the needs and wants from those departments. And there was a comment made by one of the individuals, I think the young lady there in the front row, Jennifer, I think with Jennifer, right, Jennifer? And that she liked the the small-town spirit of Lamarck. I agree. I've been here over sixty years with Laura. Laura went to school with my brother, and 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 so I was the here before them too, right? And so it has always been a small-town community. It's always been that way. And as a matter of fact, I not only had, didn't have paved roads, I had shell roads is what we started off here in Lamarck. And we didn't have infrastructure. We had what was called a a septic tank. When everything went into the septic tank. So there was a transition that occurred, and I feel for the better over the years. Now, having said that, having said that, for me, for me, the challenges, the challenges in terms of this budget is as a community, as a community, how are we going to split up? My experience to split up the challenges that we have in terms of the needs and the wants. We don't talk about We don't talk about very clearly that we recently negotiated, renegotiated, I should say this, and extended our collective bargaining agreement with the fire department and with the police department. Those represented significant personnel salary costs for those. And no one is saying we need to get rid of the police and no one is saying we need to get rid of the fire department. In fact, we feel that there probably needs to be a stronger effort to go out and put more policemen on the street. We're going to be now equipping, I think our, our plan, I don't see Chief Mary, is he back there? But I think eventually, if and when we get caught up in terms of the, the supply side, that we'll eventually have four ambulances here within the city of Lamarck. And we need to staff those four ambulances as well. Right now, we only have enough for two, for two individuals. And so these factors for me, this is what I'm looking at, right? This is what I'm looking at. And then I look at the cost of business. Why do I do that? My background is in fact this, I started and became president with a small company whose first year of business was $400 million. When I left 13 years later, I had a $6 billion budget. So yeah, every year I did audits, I had to. And it wasn't just a part-time job. I was on it every day, every day, every day. And that's what I've tried to do. When I first joined this council, interestingly enough, and you talk about my fellow brother, Councilmember Lowry, I actually went out and said, look, I don't quite understand all this municipal accounting. I knew nonprofit accounting because I serve on many nonprofit boards. So I actually enrolled in a class through Coursera at West Virginia University. And it is what forensic accounting and fraud. And I've been, I've been taking this course in my spare time, and mind you, my spare time. But I've been taking this. And as I look at this, and I'll, we'll go into that on that, I'll talk more later on the agenda. But I look at the wants and the needs and where we're going as a community. In my mind, to keep Lamarck, the small community that you mentioned, which I desire as well, for as long as I'm on this earth, we have to make some assumptions, and I made some assumptions. Our maximum growth, if you look through all these papers, you can find that information. But the city manager knows, the mayor knows, I've said this over, the PR side knows. We do a crappy job of telling our story. We hide stuff. We don't. We're not very good at it. And I used to hire fire people in my PR side who, who couldn't write, who couldn't tell stories. But that's the interesting thing about sitting here on this, this, at this council. I don't have that authority anymore. I'm part of one, and by Texas law, as a home rule city, that power on the administrative side is vested in the city manager. We provide guidance, we provide him a chart of where to navigate the ship. And we count upon him and his staff to do that. We, we, we need to do better as well. Now, having said all that, my, looking at this information, looking at the, the impact fee report, there is a, a, a understanding that as a community, Lamarck's finite number in terms of population, because of its limited size, 13 square miles, is probably around 33,000 folks. That's what the information here says, 33,000 folks. We're hitting at about 19,000 right now. 2% growth per year, 2% growth. And a lot of that is in fact on the west end side, west end side over there. In fact, the west end is supporting our, what I call Old Town Lamarck too, in terms of the revenues. Because Old Town Lamarck on its own would not be able to, to, to have the police that we've gone out and secure or the grant support or telling that story. So in my analysis of all of this is to say, we're going to cap out at, what's the ideal number? We heard it from, from, from Chief Aragon. We need two officers per thousand population. On the far side, ideally, we need four people on our trucks, correct Chief Mayorman? Four people on our trucks, two on our ambulances, and those are trained EMTs. And we, we have certain equipment needs as we grow to get to 35,000 as well. Now, in my, in my analysis, in my view, and, and what I'm saying in terms of this budget, is that we need to do it now and plan now. And because cost of anything, doesn't make any difference what communicate, what party is or anything else. Economics, and that I do have a background in, economics tells us the costs go up. I've never seen it. The only time I lost was in some real estate stuff, but it still got, came back, still came back. Costs go up. We need to make our investments now. I said that in our fuel purchases. We need to do whatever we can to allocate and acquire fuel now at the lower cost. I filled up with gas today at 266, 266 a gallon. Okay, so we could, we could be buying now. And there are companies, I've got information about on, to you, I'm researching that. And we don't need to have our own tanks, they'll provide them on that side. So, so as I look at all of this, as I look at all of this, if we're going to make the commitments to fire and police that we've talked about, we need one year, one year to maintain this, these expenditure level, one year. If you look at the property tax history of Lamarck, when I joined this council in 2020, I, I joined in 2020, Laura, you and I was 2020, but we have COVID. And it extended over, in fact, really the beginning of 21, 21. And it was a choice between her or I, which of us were going to, to back away, right? We, we're, we're not exactly excited, either of us, right? We did it as favors. And, and so the, but in 2021, we were at 55 cents. And then Brother Joseph here with his, with his organizing, then there was the tax rollback. And that went back to 22, then 47 cents, 47 cents. We actually had to reimburse the community $800,000, $800,000. And then the following year, there was a further reduction by one cent of 46. And then there was a big jump, and I don't know where I was at that day. I must have not been there. But it, but because it's a, it was a jump by three cents there, a reduction there. But my view in the terms of budget, we need to hold the budget. We need to have a plan, which I believe we can come up with, I, I've been looking at one, that's going to give us the firemen and the policemen that we can plan in up to that anticipated population growth. There's nothing wrong with getting the police now as opposed to later, if we can, and the firemen and the equipment, but it's going to take a planning. And part of this planning, and Mayor, I've said this to you, I've said it to other council members, Lamarck has been stuck in this regard in the past. I've talked about a lot of things Lamarck has been stuck in. But in this one, it's been stuck in the past, is that our exempt value, our exempt value on property here in the city is only $20,000. So you take the value of your home and as a, as a, as a senior, as a senior, as someone over, or a homestead, we only deduct $20,000. That's been stuck in the past. We need to start gradually increasing that exempt amount up to what? Up to $40,000, up to $40,000. It's what I'm saying, there are other ways to provide savings to our community if we plan it. But we need stability now, that's why I'm looking at, we need stability now to provide the police, to provide the fire, to provide the minimum. By the way, my plan under this, as I look at it, there's a 2%, 3% and 4% cost of living adjustment for personnel because I believe personnel are entitled to fair wages as well too. And I'm just looking at the minimum, the 2% is what I'm looking at in terms. So we are going to be rediscussing this tomorrow. And, and then also going into a discussion here shortly on the rate itself. But you see where, where I'm at. We, that's, that's, now, having said all this, is that, is that I believe I can show that plan. I've been working on it. And I believe that we can provide the firemen, we can provide the, the police. We can provide a plan for road building. Because God knows, you guys talk about, but look at the westward. There are big holes in the road on, on, on the, on B side. Not everything is rosy on, on the other side as well too, over there. So we have to have, and that's what's challenging, where Lamarck has been stuck in the past, is we don't, we're not upfront about the plans. If you look at the audit report, but you're not expected to do that, let me say that, you're not expected to do that. But it lays out the equipment that we purchased. That's the purpose of an audit report, where the expenditures went. It's here, it's here. But we are not doing a good job of communicating that. And that's my pledge to you. And Mayor, as I said too, I hope that you take this opportunity, I think Mr. Mitch has mentioned it too, but I said it last meeting, point it, an ad hoc finance committee of citizens and a one or two members of this council to work during the, the year as well on these issues and, and, and bring them back. So those are my comments there, if it makes sense. And I hope I was heard.
Thank you, Mayor Proton.
Thank you.
I want to ask you something. So when you're talking about the finance ad hoc committee, you're, you're saying that committee to, to bring what transparency? That we were saying so people will know what it looks like?
We have, but one of the things, Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Yancy, one of the things that I have discovered here is that we have some dynamic individuals in this community who we love to go through life, we want to do other things, right? I believe me, I want to do other things. I do want to do other things. And, but yet they're, they're not willing to give up the, all the time that I'm giving up on this, or you or any of us. But they're willing to give up a little bit of time. Jennifer there, I'm sure, if we did some outreach, would be interested in providing her background. Your neighbor on Mary Lane, who have had other discussions with, she's already left. But, but she, she'd love to have that, you know, that find that she's got that finance background and provide us the guidance and also the back, the backup that we need on these things to show them. So that's all I'm saying. It's looking at maintaining, making sure, as I've said over and over again too, and I can only, I only say it, but I don't have any authority, is monthly financial reports.
Yeah. We are unfortunately out of that missharing part of our agenda. Now we're in the part that we, we don't necessarily, thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that has been a healthy discussion. If there's nothing further, we'll move now to item eight three. It is 820, and so I'm trying to move us along to a reasonable end before 10. So let's move to item eight three, fiscal year 2024, 2025 tax rate regarding proposed property tax rate of four point, excuse me, point four one eight zero five eight per 100 of taxable value for tax year 2024, 2025. Again, council, this is comments only. We cannot make or take any action tonight on item eight three. The floor is open for council comments.
We're, so I understand everybody that talks about living on a fixed income, retired Navy guy, disability gets that 100%. I got and people that are in my district that I know, that I've known for a little bit and trust, they have my personal cell phone number, so I get quite a few phone calls and messages about everything. And most of them agree with the 40 cent, in between the 40 and 40, 39, within 41. But I was asked personally to make sure that I pay my 70 some odd dollars so that everybody in the city can maintain recycling twice a month. That's what I pay a year for recycling. But asking you to pay $60 more a year in your property taxes this year so that we can get Chief Merriman and Chief Aragon and his gentleman, all the stuff that they need because that's what $400,000 divided by 7,000 people equates to is $60. That's asking too much. It's okay to ask me on a fixed income to pay so you can maintain a twice a month service. But not okay for us to ask that everybody pay that to maintain their level of service. That's, and that is as a fixed income person.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mayor Bell?
Yes.
Again, I just want to reiterate, we, we don't have a, a tax problem here in this community. We have a spending problem. And, and I don't want to get, get to comparing salaries or, or incomes with households because we've heard tonight that from a citizen that what, what they're dealing with. Everybody's circumstances are different. You could double, triple, quadruple, 10 times, my, ain't gonna affect me, ain't gonna bother me. But we need to listen to taxpayers. Everybody that came up here and spoke tonight asked for a tax decrease. Everybody asked for a forensic audit. So again, I, I, when, when we did the tax rollback, it was pretty clear that, that the citizens by 72%, but three years ago, wanted a tax rollback. I remember in one of the meetings one time, and I don't remember if it was a previous administration, but I remember you mentioning that we had like 70 or 90 public works employees.
At one point in time, I believe we had 80 to 90.
80 to 90. My streets ain't looking like they had 80 to 90 public works employees. My water pressure ain't looking, it ain't always like it had 80, 90 employees. So we, we start, we back up, we back up, we back up. We do a forensic audit. Forensic audit puts everything in a row. Forensic audit says, hey, you had a grade all over here.
We're not on nine five yet. I would like to not talk about the forensic audit until we get there, please.
We, 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 we find out that it, it, we need to put everything in a line. We need to get everything figured out. We can't ask for more money if we can't account for everything. I mean, it's, it's just, if, if, if my employee comes to me and says, I need another $100,000 for, for the year, well, for what? Well, I don't know, I just need it. Okay, for what? Show me. I need pencils. Okay, well, there's a dollar. It's got to be accounted for. And, and, and I agree with you about the breakdown. I, I want to know everything. My, my brain, I, I have to see what are we spending it on, not, you know, there's just no breakdown of anything. There, there should be very itemized list, and a zero budget, in a zero budget, what, what that actually entails is you go back last year to find out what was spent. Each department has to say, I need 200 reams of paper, I need 300 pencils. That's a zero budget. That, that's what you do when you go back to zero budget. I don't think we've done that. I'm willing to, whatever I can do in, inside of the, the law to, to help Caesar, I, I would love to do it. I can do it. I can help you. I, I can show you if that's something that you want. But as Mayor Proton was saying, we need to look into the future. I, I would start now at budgeting a 35 cent. Okay, instead of always looking for more, you know, the money's coming in, we're going to get more money. We got all these new restaurants coming in. We, we've got all this new tax revenue coming in. Sales tax, lots of sales tax coming in from all these new businesses. When that sales tax come in, they need a break. That's their break. That's not, that's not, oh, we got, we got a slush fund, we get more money to spend. That's not what that's for. That's, that's sale, saving them money. And that, so my recommendation, instead of looking for spending more money in the future, let's decrease, let's put in our minds now a, as a council to, let's start at this rate down here. Let's start down here. That, that's just, society as a whole has, has, has have, has had a spending problem. Look at people's credit card debts and stuff. It, it, it's just, it's just what they do. They just spend, 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 and I'll figure it out later. We gotta, we gotta get away from that. We're, we're, we gotta be accountable for.
I agree that this city has a spending problem. Not even questioning that. What I'm asking is, when Ms. Murphy and I went and looked at drainage ditches, I want to get rid of this 60-year-old sewer. I want to get rid of this sixty year old sewer pipe. That's on the Lee streets. That's made out of clay still. Might need a leg, little extra money for that right now. And I mean, that's all of that side of District D, clay sewer pipe. I'm. Asking for one year. And if I want to make real tax breaks, like Mr. Compion has said. I want to see it in the homestead exemption. Because Texas City ISD, who has a much larger tax rate than we do. I pay them nothing because of their homestead exemption. So let's, let's look at what really can make a break and work towards that. Instead of a thirty nine cent tax break, let's, I'm willing to give you my sixty bucks. So that I can have the Fran Lee Street and I see that guy sitting on a batco waiting to pump out a. Out of hole because there's a clay pipe that's broken. And we haven't used, that hasn't been used in the United States since the sixties.
And, and I understand what you're saying, Mr. Ross. You can afford that sixty dollars. I can afford that, but not everybody can. That, that's what I'm getting at. Not, not everybody can. It, it's different to, to, to each person.
And literally I can't. But I'm willing to give it to the city to do that while I'm still my broke, broke. Self is trying to get a two hundred fifty thousand dollar loan to bring in a business to the city. Um, to pay myself minimum wage. So that I can pay my workers better than I'm getting to bring something into this city. No, no, I can't afford that extra sixty bucks. But I'm willing to do it so that I can make sure I don't have clay sewer pipes in District D.
Go ahead. I'm going to agree with you. Because in the, the discussion and the working, the. Five year financial planning that I've been doing. It does actually do that. I, I said when I first joined council, I want tax rates to decrease. But they have to be planned. You have to plan them. And, and in my, I, I'm going to decrease, I'm going to suggest because I can't do it by myself. But bring down that value to increase it to after the fourth year. You've got a forty thousand dollar tax exemption, right? That's the value that's taken off. Plus. For my purposes, I'm taking off a year, a penny a year. That's what I'm doing in my calculations. That does not mean that it can't go lower. I'm just saying in my calculations, because that's, that's what I believe in. You have to have a gradual planned reduction. And the other thing that's so important for this community is I, I, I want to remind people. The mayor's reminded me of this as well too, is that. The debt that this community has assumed. It's not been on any of us on this council. It's been debt that was assumed years back. That we're paying for now. Because there has not been a bond that's been approved. What was last time? Someone said, I think it was.
Isn't that twenty seventeen or something like that?
Oh, you mean. Not for us as a municipality. That was county.
Oh, the county, or well, the fire department, I guess.
That was, that was CO.
Well, it's, it's equivalent there. But the other thing that I keep looking at is what we have. And, and we don't talk about it enough is that we've got a big unfunded liability on our pensions. This is pensions liability that people that have left us actually. And the, the numbers are in here. If we go back with our audited financial statements, they're in here. Unfortunately. I've, I know them. I can find them, right? But we have to communicate this to show you what the audited statements say. Because at some point that we have to pay that as well too. We have to pay that and, and, and that goes to our fire department that goes to police. And that's an issue that we also as council, as we know, I've said this, need to iron out as well too. So that's, that's why I'm asking and my position. Might not be pop, but that's my position. I look at this from a financial perspective. Here, hold, because it, it's, it's not going to get any easier if we don't hold the rate down. Hold the rate down. And by the way, under SB two, which, which I find is those dang politicians, they're all lawyers. Robert, okay, but, um, that they wrote the law. They're never, never going to say, well, this represents a tax decrease. The language of SB two, Senate Bill two is such that it will always say, always. Even i- if it goes below, right? The market goes, the real estate market, it goes bad and, or the appraisal district goes away, uh, things of this nature. But they will never say this represents a tax decrease. The language says always, always that this represents a tax increase. So it's a bit deceptive in that side. And so I would want to be, remind everyone of that as well too. So.
Counsel, let me remind us, it's, it's about eight thirty five. We are halfway through this agenda. We have executive session as well as a long day tomorrow. Um. Which we will talk about eight, two and eight, three again on tomorrow. And so there's more conversation to be had and we will have more conversation. Let me just end this on this, this, see if I can put a fine point on. A lot of talk about. The needs of this community. Clearly there are streets. There, there is sewer, uh, water infrastructure. Uh, and all sorts of other issues, public safety, human resources, police, fire, equipment. And all of those things that we've talked about tonight. There is a Senate Bill two that is law. Uh, it is in effect, uh, in a very real way, uh, that makes, uh, things different for us. As we navigate these issues of fiscal responsibility and fiscal, uh, resource. But I think to think about that, and I'm not going to be long on this one, but to think about this from those standpoints. Is a fundamental misunderstanding of the argument. Uh, or, and, or at least, uh, the lack of acknowledgement of the argument. Everybody in this room and everyone who participated online would probably all raise their hand. Uh, if I were to say, do you believe our city has these said needs? Yes, 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 we need more police. Yes, we need more fire. Yes, our streets need to be repaired. All of these things. Yes, 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 yes. But that's not the argument that the people of Lamarck are making tonight. The argument that people of Lamarck are making tonight is yes, Mayor Proton, we need that. Yes, Ms. Yancy, we need that. Yes, Mr. Lowry, we need that. Yes, Mr. Ross, we need that. But here's the deal. The numbers are not accurate. And it does not matter. It doesn't matter what we need. If we cannot truly be presented with accurate numbers. It breeds distrust. And it doesn't matter when people, when you're dealing with people's money, it does not matter. The need, what matters more than anything to people in the world when they have to part from their money, it's trust. And until we solve the trust issue, counsel. Whatever that looks like. We will not have the majority of support. To, to raise one, in my opinion, and then I'll be done. To raise one penny more, uh, in new tax revenue until we solve that one issue. And so I look forward to tomorrow for us to be able to have a healthy debate on the tax rate. I respect Mayor Proton's position. I respect, uh, Councilmember Baross's position. Uh, both of those men are diligent, serious men, uh, looking for answers for our community and I respect that. Uh, but at this point, I have not seen enough to move off of personally, to move off of thirty nine cent. Um, let's, let's discuss this more tomorrow, counsel. Um, let's move now into eight, four without objection. Boards and commissions, appointment, reappointment, a removal of members of boards and commissions. And committees, counsel, do we have any appointments that we would like to make tonight? Uh, and I need that to be prefaced with a motion.
But, uh. Mayor, I, uh. This is by way of a report. They, if for clarification, uh, unfortunately, one of our members on, um. Mr. Colombo, he had passed away.
Yes.
And so we need, I need to make a new appointment for that one.
Proceed. Are you ready?
No, 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 no. I, I, I just wanted to make sure. And then I want to report that our, our, uh, parks and boards. Has now gotten down to the five members.
Okay.
By attrition as well too. So we have five members there.
Very good. Thank you for that, Mayor Proton. Any nominations to, uh, boards or commissions or committees tonight? Well, I have one. I would like to appoint Mr. Dash Cantu. Uh, he is a Lamarck police officer. Is that right? Uh, and he is also a, a member of our community. I believe he, I don't want to say where he resides. That's not, that's not good. Yeah, let's not do that. He does live in Lamarck though. Uh, and, and, and Kiara will have his address. I, I want to appoint him to the Public Safety Committee. I believe a last meeting or the meeting before, um, we were encouraged to add, uh, police officers. Uh, to that committee because those persons will have to do the job in that facility. So it's good to have not only police officers that work for our city, but also police officers that live in our city. Uh, to help us to understand the needs of that building. And so that is my nomination to the active member of the, uh, Public Safety Committee. If there are no other, uh, nominations, I will entertain a second to that nomination.
Second.
There is no discussion on, uh, an appointment. So we'll move toward a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, counsel. Item nine, new business proposed resolution. Uh, requesting preventative tree trimming on and around utility lines. This is something the council has done or has tried to do annually. Uh, we just had a storm hurricane borough that, uh, caused a lot of damage to our power infrastructure. Uh, because of the overhanging limbs and trees and things of that nature that, uh, tend to, uh, be overgrown in our city. Uh, the council, uh, is ultimately responsible for, uh, the easements of all of those properties. Uh, in our city. Uh, but as you could probably tell, it is very expensive for a city our size. To try to go about the business of removing tree limbs along power lines. And so most cities our size, uh, enter into partnerships with the power company. And the power company trims those trees. They should trim those trees for us. So because of that, every year we send them a letter, a nice letter, uh, encouraging them to do their, uh, part. In this process. Uh, and so that's what this is tonight. Uh, it's a resolution requesting preventative tree trimming. Uh, counsel, I will, I will to Centerpoint Energy as well as Texas New Mexico Power, two different organizations. Counsel, I will, uh, entertain a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I nine two sanitary. Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
It's a resolution number R dash twenty twenty four dash zero, zero, four, five.
R dash twenty twenty four.
Dash zero, zero, four, five.
Zero, zero, four, five. Thank you, Ms. Nance. Nine, two sanitary sewer pipeline replacement. Emergency replacement of sanitary sewer pipeline on Corbett Street. To be completed by JSS Construction in the amount of ninety five thousand fifty dollars. While Mr. Siler approaches. Was this, uh, a contract that was bid it out to JSS Construction? How is it that we find them here on the line, Adam?
Yes, Mayor. Um, this item, we've got three quotes. It is an emergency repair. It is a collapsed sewer line.
Okay.
It is only affecting this business. Uh, it was brought to our attention by, by the business owner. Uh, it has been a recurring problem. His business is off of Gulf Freeway. Um, so because of that need, we did go out and seek three quotes for the service. We had the engineer, uh, go out and, uh, take a look at the actual property. We had staff go out and take a look at it. It was TB'd, so on and so forth. We deem that it is indeed a collapsed sewer line. It is indeed an emergency repair. Having said that, since it is only affecting the business, we did approach our EDC for support on this item. Uh, thankfully for us in this case, they, they decided they can cover the entire amount up to the ninety five thousand fifty dollars. If there are any cost overruns, they did stipulate that those would be on the city to cover. But they have, uh, stepped to the plate in that essence, since it is indeed, uh, a, a, a repair that is an emergency. And it's only going to affect, it's only affecting this business right now.
Okay. Counsel, do we have any questions for Mr. Siler or Mr. Garcia as it relates to nine, two?
I, I, Mayor, do.
Go ahead.
Not to impugn the integrity of one of our members of the EDC. But when we have these arrangements with the EDC to reimburse us, is that in writing?
Uh, this, this one in particular has gone to them in a meeting. It was voted on and we do have the minutes and they are provided for you in the backup documentation before you tonight.
Okay. All right. Not to, just wondering.
Yes, Mayor Proton.
That's practical.
Any, anything further? Did I get a, a motion yet, Ms. Nance?
I still move.
Okay. Is there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine, three, senior community service employment program. Authorizing the city to become a host agency. Uh, for the senior community employment program. I'm, I'm sorry.
Mayor, just a thought. And Mr. City Manager, in terms of best practices, you said that we're obligated for any cost overruns on this last item.
Yes.
If, if there are, please, I would ask that you bring that to our attention. So that we can.
To the entire council in a public meeting.
Absolutely.
With, with background, with a narrative that says, guys, do you remember this? There you go.
Yes, sir. Uh, if I can, real quick, while, while Mr. Aaron, um, joins us at the podium. Uh, this program, if you remember, we learned about through our partnership with Workforce Solutions. Um, this is a essentially a workforce solutions, uh, branch of, of a program that is specific for seniors. So this allows us to possibly get, uh, some, some form of, um. Additional services, uh, and staffing through this program, uh, at no cost to the city. If there's any questions, we'll ask for, um, your questions now. Aaron's here to help assist.
Very good. Counsel, do we have any questions for Aaron tonight on nine, three? I only have one question, Aaron.
Yes, sir.
And, and, and really, it just needs to really be brief. Um. And I don't know who I was talking to. Was I talking to you or you? Was I talking to you? Can these? How did I word that? Here's what I, I'm, I'm trying to ask. So there are retired detectives. Uh, retired police officers, I'm sure all over the county. Can this program, would this program be able? To help the police department hire some of these retired detectives? So that they can do cold case follow ups, right? They're, they're not going anywhere. They're just in a room. They're just looking at cold case files. They're just calling old witnesses, right? You know, calling old store owners. Uh, again, that no strenuous work. They're not even police officers at this point. They're just, uh, uh, persons who are, because they have that background. They're, they're simply trying to help us to follow up on leads to see if anything has changed. To help solve some of these, these, uh, unsolved crimes in our community.
Well, that's a complex question and what I want to make sure is that my words are chosen carefully. Because while there may be individuals that may end up qualifying for this individual program. CSEP is set up to predominantly help, um, senior citizens or mature citizens, let's say that. Uh, fifty five years or older who are unemployed and have a low income.
Low income.
But. The benefit to having this, and I want to kind of capstone this, is that we have an opportunity to provide training and backfill. Um, as I've talked to in, in other, um, meetings here. Um, my focus is now on retention and, um, making sure that we kind of maintain our staffing levels as much as we possibly can. This would be a possibility to help us do that. Um, now, with that being said, there's no obligation to employ these individuals. Um, as of right now, the funding, um, through the federal government is set at about eighteen hours per week. Paying about nine seventy five per hour. Um, we pay nothing to that. Um, our liability is nothing. Um, the insurance for those employees are paid through the CSEP program. Um, the insurance for those employees are paid through the CSEP program. What we are doing is we're providing them an opportunity to train and skill up. Um, we have no obligations to keep them during the program. So we, we can keep them and train them up as long as we have a position for them to train.
And, and Mayor, if I can, the only one stipulation is, is if the example that you brought up, as long as, for example, we have a vacancy for a detective, right? That person cannot supplement what would be another position. So for example, if we have five detectives and we've only have four hired and we're going to use that person for that spot, they would need to be hired full-time. They can't be part of the program to, to save us that fifth person. So they can
Right.
Yes, sir, yes.
Do you know if, whether or not some of those folks, we might be able to use some to, to kind of do some cold case follow-up in the P D? Have y'all got?
Technically, technically, that would have to be followed up through the organization. But essentially, that would have to be a conversation between the potential candidate and then obviously the ability that P D feels that they could fulfill that task in that sense, as long as the funding agency allows it.
Okay.
And here's a wonderful opportunity. If that's the direction that we want to go, that is a direction that we can work towards. Because we set the standards for who we allow into our, into our, uh, city. So therefore, um, if we try to go that route and we say, okay, this is the training program to enable you to do this, then there's certain things that we can do to train them up to that level. But then again, also too, that would be a conversation with the Chief of Police and also too with Mrs. Dallas. She's the, she's the director of CSEP.
Uh, yeah, I would, Mayor.
You don't think you could, the civil service? Okay, okay. That's just a thought, just a thought. Did you?
Yeah, I was gonna say, uh, so, so you're saying that we can hide, we can take somebody that was formerly an officer without a license to, to practice law in the state of Texas. They can be a, a detective?
No, what I'm saying is that we could have them fill in needed to, need to be positions, like answering the phone and may, perhaps maybe I misunderstood the question. I thought it was answering the phone. Sorry, I was paying attention to the body language, not necessarily the, uh, the question. So I mean, to the point of them being a detective, the only possibility that they could do to be able to do that role is if they've already qualified for that and they meet the threshold of being, um, underemployed or below the poverty level. And sometimes life happens, so who knows? Maybe there's some candidates out there in that particular situation.
So they're going to be working with sensitive information inside the department?
No, not necessarily. We picked the program and I, I want to make sure that we're clear here because we're kind of, we're kind of going into a.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me clear this up for you, Aaron. Um, that was a, just an idea I had, Councilmember, about that. That, that's not a part of their program. I was thinking, can we use them?
Okay.
In this way or that way?
So it's a base, it's a baseline skill. The, the majority, and I want to be very clear here. The majority of the people coming here to us are people that have worked in retail situations or people like my mother, who was a stay-at-home wife and for, like, up until the time that she died, she, she took in sewing. Um, those are the opportunities that this is for.
Okay.
And I want to be very clear that I tell you, I, I learned about the program because, um, uh, a, a person came through the, came through here. And she said, hey, I'm a part of CSEP. Are y'all a part of this? And she was a great candidate. And, you know, I really appreciate the fact that we are pulling in people throughout the community. But this is just another opportunity to help us to kind of, um, look at ways to be creative. Because what I'm hearing here right now is that we're in a situation where we have to do less with more. Well, more with less, right? And that may be the situation that we're in. And I'm hoping that we'll use opportunities like this to further that, that hope. Because what we're doing is really giving opportunities to people and whether we bring them on or not, the invaluable skills that they're going to learn from the city of Lamarck will carry them into bigger and better places. And that's what I'm hoping will, this will accomplish.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Nancy tapped my arm and then Mayor Proton.
So this is a very good program, Mayor. It's been around for quite some time in just, in different forms. Typically, is that exactly what he said? When there's, if, if, if you're needed to clean up, help with files, things of that nature, it's, it's a, it's a way to kind of get, help you to catch up and it's a way for them to make a little cash and be able to feel like they're giving back to the community. But very good program. I'm glad you guys did it. I was on that call before, I think last year, when they were talking about, they were looking for places to work. So I'm glad that, um, you actually followed up on that and someone came. It's a very good program and I think our retirees definitely need to know about it.
Very good. Mayor Proton?
I hope, I hope and pray that you find three qualified, properly trained individuals that you can utilize to answer our phones.
Well, and that's the wonderful thing. Maybe we can. And if we can't get them, um, already trained, we can train them.
Yeah.
If we can't get them to help us solve cases, we can get them to answer the phone, right?
Absolutely.
All right. Counsel, do we have any other questions for Aaron? Uh, hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Aaron. Item nine four, uh, we are going to put some time on this mic. Yes. Nine four Bayou Fest twenty twenty four regarding planning and updates from the Park Board for the Bayou Fest event, October eighteenth, nineteenth. Mr. Bach, a few things. Number one, we asked you to go back to get buy-in from your board, right? And you said that you would go back to your board. So we want to hear that, number one. Number two, the council does not have a plan. We didn't, we didn't endorse any plan, your plan, Mr. Guidry's plan. We're, we're just trying to make sure that Bayou Fest goes forward in a professional way for our community. So, um, let's try to, uh, well, Kyle, we don't have to put a timer on, but let's, you and I look at the clock together and you give me the. All right. Did you have anything that you want to share with us before we start questioning you or?
No, uh, you can go ahead.
Very good. Counsel, do we have any, let me ask, let me lead off and then they'll join. Did you have a meeting with your board?
Yes.
What was the results of that meeting?
So the meeting, so we've been now reduced to five.
Okay.
Including myself. There's four been board members that are fully involved and one bit board member who doesn't want to be.
Okay.
And same board member that's been like that for the last few years.
But you have four out of five that have committed. Did y'all vote?
We couldn't because the way it was put on our agenda, it was just a discussion. We're voting for that and funding next, in September at our next meeting.
So will y'all vote in the future? And, and, and will the, I'm just clarifying this for council. And will video or the minutes reflect that in that meeting, you have an actively engaged board, ready to work with you?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
And the ex-official member.
Were you there? Were Joe was there, huh? Were Joe, you were there? Do you agree?
Yeah.
All right, well, we got a plan now. So Kyle, we're going to open it up now to council for questions. Counsel, do we have any questions for Mr. Bach as it relates to the twenty twenty four Bayou Fest?
You ready to make it a big one?
Trying, but, uh, every time you turn, we hit a wall. We're, the funding, you know, when I was here at the Parks Board meeting and I looked in that seven hundred and fifty-page book, there was a proposed budget of a hundred and fifty thousand eighty-four that was hot tax money. I'm now told zero hot tax money. So I'm working with a sixty-six thousand dollar budget.
You were told this, zero hot tax money for Bayou Fest? Well, I'm gonna let Mr. Garcia respond to that here in a minute. Did anyone tell you that Waste Management has a fifty thousand dollar donation? Okay, so you all aware of that?
So that, the budget we have is sixty-ish thousand. It's, uh, fifty from Waste Management, uh, I want to say ten from Air Liquide, that used to be Praxair, I believe. And then perhaps five or six from one other, uh, sponsor that.
What was the ten thousand?
Uh, it's.
Air Liquide.
Think it is?
Air Liquide.
Air Liquide.
Yeah, how you spell it?
Uh.
It's air.
A I R E.
A I.
R E. Liquide, L I Q U I D E.
Gotcha. And then you said six thousand was from?
I'm not sure. That's another, uh, believe.
That's okay.
Another, these three sponsors are rollover sponsors. They've been sponsors for.
Here comes JB behind you. So I don't know, he has a big book of information. He has binders of information. Do you want to add something to that, JB? As far as the six thousand?
Fifty thousand from Waste Management, ten thousand from what is now Lindy, L I N D E, which used to be Praxair. And then, I'm sorry, sir.
No, six, the six thousand?
And then I believe it was six thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars is from Hot. There was a majority, the eight, eighty or so given from Hot to the Bayou Fest Fund in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Uh, budget. However, those monies have to cover staff costs as well. So the overall budget for that, as directed by council, has to take into the cost for police, fire, administration.
You all are using that hot tax money and you all are dispersing it directly to the departments for the manpower.
That, that is the plan for this year. Yes, sir. Because that is the only way that we're going to be able to, to cover that for all departments.
And is that what you were going to tell me? I didn't want to overrun. Was that, was that what you were going to tell?
Yes, Mayor. So, uh, as we did last year, the, the intent was to not absorb any of the costs associated with this event through the general fund. Uh, so that was the direction that we were going in, uh, to make sure that any event funds were covered through the event budget. In the past, the budget had fluctuated from a hundred and eighty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars up to amounts. But that amount before was not even inclusive of some of the staff costs. So P D, fire and admin, everybody involved would be eating the staff cost tied to that through their actual general fund budget. Once we became a little bit more lean in, 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 uh, the form of our operations, we've tried to absorb all those costs through the actual event budget itself. And that's what I, I believe JB was trying to.
So, so the long and the short of it, uh, Mr. Bach, you, you probably feel like you would like a little more funding? Is that what you?
Let me make one thing clear.
Okay.
So the discussions I've had with two managers this whole time, been told there's no hot tax on it. I understand we have to pay police, fire department. Be transparent with me. Say, okay, we need forty, fifty thousand dollars to pay these guys. That's where this money's coming from, but that never has been spoken to me.
Yeah.
Uh, it's just been, you got sixty-six thousand dollars. Never was, because I'm not, they need to be paid. And it comes out of fun. I totally understand. But just tell me, okay, this part.
Sure.
We have to pay for that. That's never been in one of my conversations. All I've been told is you got sixty-six thousand spent.
Okay. Well, do you, do you, uh, hold on just a minute. Do you, are you, are you thinking that you're going to need more funding? Just, yes, yes.
Well, now it's kind of too late, but I, I can, uh, uh, trying to get the bands and whatnot. It's, it's been a nightmare trying to get banned. And so the increased funding, like I've spoke before, brings in the better quality bands. Okay, with that being said, we transition away from that. We got a Friday night that's going to kill it with Tahoe music and a DJ. Saturday, we're mixing up the genres. So we got a, uh, and we're use, on Saturday, we're using local bands. So that's where the budget cut is. And, uh, so Saturday, uh, we have a, uh, bands called, they have a Zadiko Blues Band. We have an open slot that I'm trying to fill with a top forty-ish band that plays all kinds of hits. And then we have a, uh, country music band.
So, so you're going, you're gonna need to request more funding or not? And yes or no?
I believe, well, so I need to see what the totals are.
Okay.
And, and, cause so I can tell you this right now with, uh.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, let's get out, out of all that. I needed you, just, that's fine, Mike. Yeah, I, I know, but we can talk about this more tomorrow. I promise you. Mr. Lowry, did you have something?
Yeah, well, what's, what's available in hot, in the hot tax account?
Pulling that number up right now as far as the last number. That's what I was working on as you asked. So if you give me a moment, I'll have that answered to you.
But what I'm trying to say, uh, Mike, is this. If there's a possibility that you need more funding, we're going to bring you back tomorrow during the budget workshop so that we can think about this more clearly. That's all I was trying to say. And, uh, Mr. Pritchard is saying that you may need more funding, so we're going to have to take it up again tomorrow.
Right now, uh, I don't want to discuss it, but we've had to, uh, when this first posed us, we had the music covered. We had the cook-off covered because that's where the change of money is going to go. And I was told all the activities, which are all children's activities, were on hold till we get funded. And we, they reached out to us to give the, um, names of businesses and corporations. Uh, created a, uh, sponsor form, sponsor package to send out. I'm assuming they're doing it. We, we were told we're not allowed to give them the information. They'll do it. So at that point, all the activities during the day that y'all see were put on hold. So then we couldn't act on it, but it was a discussion at the, uh, our last.
Okay.
Board member, uh, Parks Board, I roughly figured for the small items, we can, we can handle four activities and pay just a little over a thousand dollars. Parks Board put it in to keep them. I'm talking about the kids queue, pickleball, porn hole.
Yeah.
And kids fish. That. Now's all, I'm talking through it. I'll just go and take notes is what he's requesting is, one of our tiny minor, uh, activities, very popular is the pumpkin garden.
Yeah.
That, that, uh, the chamber setup, the pumpkin costs like twelve hundred dollars.
So we need more money?
Yes.
Okay. Did you get your, your question answered, Mr. Lowry?
Yes, and, and so who, who's responsible for these, um, sponsor packets? Who's, who's handling that?
Uh, JB, JB and that.
JB, and so there's an, an account or a fund for that, that's going to be?
Yes, we have a donation account where we accept annually any donations that were to come in for Bayou Fest or any of our special events. That is one of the accounts that we accept donations within.
Donate, the donation fund in the fund items?
As far as that's concerned, yes, sir. That's the same place where we would document the donation.
The other fund balances.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Did you have something? I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Lowry, were you done?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm. I, I hear us doing the same thing. JB and Mr. City Manager, we, we've gone through this. This is, this is a if the city is making a contribution from Hot, take the money and put it in a special fund at that's called Bayou Fest. This is planning for the future. It's not planning for JB. It's not planning for Mr. Garcia. It's not even planning for me. It's how you plan an event.
We, we have that in a Bayou Fest.
Yes, sir.
We have ones.
But, but show, show that it's been transferred there. Track the fund.
Yes, sir.
It, it does.
From Hot.
Yes, sir.
It does.
It is about eighty-four to eighty-five thousand dollars.
Yes.
For everybody to understand.
Just to show that, that we don't cover, i- if we transfer that out every year, I didn't mean to cut you off there, but if we transfer out eighty-five for Bayou Fest from Hot every year, you do not have the sustainability for that. You make a hundred thousand in Hot every year, a hundred thousand total. That goes to everything that includes Hot, Bayou Fest being the largest, being the only one of now three or four that can be taken from Hot, including Juneteenth, including Fourth of July. So that hot transfer from Fund Ten to Fund Nine or Nine to Ten, I'm sorry, I get confused, from Hot to Bayou Fest is shown every year in the value of about eighty-five thousand. That with the fifty thousand from Waste Management, with the ten thousand from Lindy or Praxair, um, with anything donated into that additional fund or raised there and after is all consolidated in that Bayou Fest fund as notated, Mayor Proton. And then everything spent for Bayou Fest comes out of that Bayou Fest fund. Yes, sir. And each one of those, to your point last week, has a line item that says fire administrative costs, police.
Thank you. And that's helpful to rock and chair as.
Yes, yeah, we'll get it to you.
And I think the point that was coming out before to Mr. C, uh, to Mr. Garcia's point is a lot of those staff hours were absorbed by the department budgets. The P D budget, three hundred. is a lot of those staff hours were absorbed by the department budgets. The PD budget, three hundred thousand over the fire, three hundred thousand over and so on and so forth. Obviously, three hundred thousand is not Bayou Fest.
And, and Mayor, let me just interject here. We're, we're going from, we're going from being a smoker. I'm trying to be and, and then from being a, a, a chain smoker in this event, if I can, now to go cold turkey. All right, good this. There's gotta be a, once again, a transition, you know, that sure, the departments are out there. And if, if, if we're supporting, then it's X amount from the police and fire. And then, and then ha, it's, it's gotta be a plan. And so like I said, we're just going forcing them to go cold turkey. I want to see this be successful. The other thing is just, I'm, I'm, I'm making this request and this, let's not micromanage the, 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 the Parks Board in terms of these activities. Let, we don't need micromanagement. This city has gotten along with volunteerism for as long as I had the most successful events that keep Lamarque Beautiful and others at, at the Parks Board have been led by volunteers. Let us do that. Let us do that. That's all.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Uh, did you want to add something, Mr. Garcia?
Two, two very quick points. Um, one, the hot tax balance is three thirty-two. It, it is your will, whatever you'd like to do with those funds. I, I do remind everybody, please, that hot, that, uh, Bayou Fest is a very unique event where it lapses between two fiscal years every year. So you keep in mind that right now, for example, in this fiscal year, we'll incur some of the expenses, but the event actually takes place next fiscal year. So every year, your, your, your expenses are split between the two fiscal years because of when, when it falls. It's in the first month of the new fiscal year. So we'll take care of some of these. So that's why when you see the accounting of it, it looks that way. But to the point that was made, this has been part of a three-year plan that we've slowly started to implement, little by little, to try to get it to where it's manageable, because at one point it was severely, severely overburdened.
I, I would say this to that, Mr. Garcia, um, at, um, we need to, I hear you, I hear what you're saying and I get that. But, but we need to work toward putting everything in one fiscal year. So at some point, the planning would be to, um, to, uh, earmark dollars for Bayou Fest. Not only the actual Bayou Fest, but the planning for that next year should be in this fiscal year's budget as well. Does that make sense?
What can happen, Mayor? Wh- what can be done is that we can actually, um, those expenses that are related to Bayou Fest for the next, you know, for next fiscal year, we can do it as a prepaid expense. And then in the new fiscal year, it would actually hit that particular expense line. It will reverse and hit that expense line that it's supposed to sit on. That way it can all be reported in one fiscal year.
Okay, so tomorrow you'll show us that so that we can see it and understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Um, and then we can move forward from there. Mike, uh, we'll, we'll probably have, uh, the city manager or the city secretary get out to you. Tomorrow we'll bring you back for about thirty more minutes to get this, get this sorted out. You promised to keep it with him?
I promise to keep it short.
Last time you went longer than.
Yes, sir.
You know you did, didn't you? I'm, I'm teasing, Mike. I'm teasing.
Just a little tidbit, you know, before I leave, um, is still budget conscious, okay? Just our music alone, we got, we'll end up bringing in five bands, one DJ for ten thousand dollars less than what we paid last year for three bands.
Yeah. Good job, Mike. Good job.
If you're still looking for that top forty band, I suggest you reach out to the band Tennessee, just.
Okay.
Their local band.
Yeah. All right.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Let's move now to item nine five, uh, forensic audit regarding a request for a forensic audit. Counsel, uh, be advised as with the line items for A three and A, A two and A three. Uh, we can't actually take any action tonight, but we can certainly let the administration know what our thoughts are, uh, and we can place items on the next agenda for action. Kyle, let's try uh, to get this done in about fifteen minutes. Uh, and we'll check and reconvene to see if council's still discussing. All right, counsel, who has, uh, if any one of us has, uh, comments, uh, proposals to be made on nine five forensic audit? Anyone?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lowry, lead us off.
Alrighty, um, again, I want to go back to the actual, uh, routine audit. It's, it's not a forensic audit. I want to make that very clear. Um, the routine audit found a lot of discrepancies. One of the, one of the things that they found was cash balances uh, unaccounted for and even being in the negative. Um, we also had, uh, Mrs. Beatty give us twelve items that she was concerned about. Balance fund cash being number one. Um, we need to create a process of fund cash and equity monthly. So there was, there was twelve items from her. Um, uh, Mrs. Beatty, she's one of the people that works in finance. Uh, there was supposed to be a temporary hire that has turned into a full-time position. Uh, she's about sixty-five bucks an hour. Uh, she started about a hundred and fifty an hour. Um, but for the forensic audit, um, uh, Mr. Garcia, if you could just answer these questions for me. Is, is every penny that, that the city has said to, is it all accounted for? Every single penny right now? You know exactly where it's at?
As to the expenses where they were made this last fiscal year? Yes.
You know where every penny is, every penny that's been spent?
For the last fiscal year, every single account, everything that's happened. Being that some of it was before I, I came in mid-fiscal year, I can't account for anything that happened afterwards.
Since, since you've been here, you know where every penny is. Every penny that's been spent, you know exactly where. So i- if you, you're saying that you do, then, then how are we having issues with the budget? We, we heard that there's just so many things to ask for a forensic audit. We've heard, um, we have a new city manager. We've heard we have a new finance director. We've had budgets presented to us that were not accurate, that, that didn't line up with stuff. So those, those, you know, we've heard that it was the previous administration. Um, that, that there's just so many things and, and a forensic audit could be a good thing. It could be a really good thing. Um, can you say right now that you know for certain, one hundred percent certainty that no contractor that's working for the city has any ties to anybody that's working for the city or an elected official? Can you say that indefinitely?
There would be absolutely no way that I can confirm that because I don't know any of the personal tie-ins that any single contractor may have with any member.
Something that, and that is something that a forensic audit will look into.
Councilman, if you could please, if you're.
Yeah.
If you're gonna ask me a question.
Let's, let's discuss. Let, let's go back. Let, let, let's. Let's go back and forth with a healthy. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's go back and forth with a healthy.
Question, let me finish the answer.
So, so that is something that, that a forensic audit would look for.
May I please finish the answer?
Go ahead.
It depends on what level of forensic audit you're asking for, councilman. And respectfully, it depends on what this council's will is. It is not my opinion nor anybody else is on the staff to do. We are merely bringing you facts forward for the council to make a decision on. If you want to go to a fine-tooth comb and find out how much money was spent thirty years ago, that's this council's will. You asked me a question about can I account for everything? Honestly, I can account to what happened ten years ago. Do we know that the budget was correct ten years ago? I can't state that and nobody here can. Not one single person can. Can we say that it was accurate twenty years ago? No, we cannot. Nobody can with full certainty. The questions, if you could allow me, I allowed you, councilman, if you, you asked me a question, if you can please allow me respectfully to answer. The answer to that is without a shadow of doubt, there is no human alive that can tell you without a shadow of certainty with that. I could tell you what I put my name on with the checks that I sign, what this staff does and the work that we do. That's what I can tell you without certainty. Uh, with, with complete certainty. I can't tell you some of the questions you're asking me because respectfully, I can't go through the chain of how somebody knows somebody.
You don't know. Did you just, it's a, it's a yes or no. So you don't know?
The answer to your question, the question that was asked, do I know without a shadow of a doubt if anything wa- was done, if there's any type of anybody knows anybody? Councilman Lowry, the answer to that question is no, I do not know. But if you wish to have that type of forensic audit done, is you dictate what you would like done.
Yes.
That's just yes or no.
Sir.
But Councilman Lowry, also, this is Christine Turner. I have reached out to a forensic audit firm. Um, they sent me over a form. If, if we ever get to the point that we need to move forward and I'll reach out to another one. But they sent a form over that we would have to fill out to kind of tell them the scope of work that we want to do. Because when I was talking, I said, well, he said, well, what, what is the council members wanting to look at? I said, I, I, from what they say, everything. And he laughed. And he said, we really, you, you get everything. It's gonna, it's a high ticket to that. But you have to give them a scope of work for them to start with. Where do you want to start? What area do you want them to look at?
With, uh, our, our city is X amount of years old. We've never had a forensic audit. We have no account for assets. We, we know that. We just found out we sold a gray doll that, that was, had trees growing through it. But did we follow state law on getting rid of the gray doll? Did it go to an auction?
Everything that has happened during my tenure has gone through auction process, been brought to council and properly disposed of. I can't speak to what happened before.
So if it's, if it, then if that was the case and everything was followed properly, then why wasn't an open record request answered stating what happened to the gray doll? Who bought it? Who sold it? Where's the payment? Where's the receipt? Why wasn't that answered? Anyhow.
Count, are, are you answering me a question again or was that just rhetorical for me not to answer?
Statement, I guess.
Okay.
Um, so the forensic audit will and can account for pieces of equipment. We heard from a, we heard from a, um, a, a, a seventy-year citizen here that he found equipment and material that was used for his property in a different city. I understand it was before your time. Did, did the equipment get returned? You know, th- those are the things that, that we can find out.
When? When was that a piece of equipment allegedly that this happened? When? How many years ago? Again, again, there's.
But those are the things that if we had materials stolen, we had a dump truck taken, we had a piece of equipment stolen for the purpose of redoing whatever. If, if you have all this stuff happen, somebody didn't know about it. A forensic audit can go through and look for things like that. And, and it's not just a bad thing, like everybody said.
Thank you, sir.
It, it, it's, they can teach you how to do things. And I would take it as, as a teachable moment, a very teachable moment to, to help us as a new city manager, as a new finance director, get everything in a row. The, the taxpayers want it. It, it is proven overwhelmingly, they want two things. They want accountability. They want with, with finances. They want number one and number, number one was streets and then number two was police. Let's get the forensic audit in order. And, and, and just like somebody said earlier, we're gonna be putting up for a bond for a PD. You think it's gonna pass without a forensic audit? Ain't gonna happen. So we're setting up our PD for failure. Again, they get kicked down the road again. Again, twenty-six years. Next year, next year, next year. We, we need to do this forensic audit. It, it's critical. And, and I thank the people that supported putting it on the agenda. I, I want to thank them very much for that because the people deserve it. It's their money. If they want a forensic audit, give them a forensic audit. If that's what they want, that's what we do. And, and people that are saying, oh, it's, it's a million dollars. It's, you know, it started at twenty-five thousand, then it went to a hundred thousand, then went to three hundred thousand. Then people are saying it's five hundred thousand. We're, who, who, who up here is making up these numbers to the, to, to give to the public? I mean.
I can't speak to that.
Knows what, what it's gonna cost. I know that, that one of the members that was here earlier, uh, one of the citizens forced a forensic audit over in Texas City. Nothing was found. It's not a bad thing. It, it knows accountability. It, it's not a bad thing and everybody's taking it as something negative. It, it's a positive thing. Take it, take it, accept it, grow from it.
Right, and I agree with you. But we have to, if it's council's will, then we need to get that scope of work done, you know, that form filled out and sent back to the firm so that they can price it out.
So if I can, Mayor?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, Councilman Lowry, all of Mayor, Council, everybody here in residence. If it is his council's will to do any type of forensic audit, and if that's what the folks want and that's what the residents want and that's what all collectively this body wants to do, then that is your will. One thing we do need to know is how, what it's, what, what do you want us to look into? For example, if I go out to dinner tonight and I order a steak, but if I want shrimp on my steak and I want an extra, everything is à la carte. What we want to know is what do you want on your menu? If that is voted upon, then at that point, what we do is we take that out, we put together an RFP package, request for proposal. We send that out for anybody to bid on whatever tho- that scope of work would be. At that time, we bring that scope of the, the, the bids, wherever they would be, we would form a committee that would be allowed to review those bids that came in. And then a selection process would be brought as a recommendation to this council to make that decision. At that time, you would have the ability to not only vote whether you want that person to be able, whoever it is, company ABC to be the actual vendor to provide the service for you. You make that decision then. One, two, you also find out where you want to pay for it from. If this council wants to take that out of reserves, you could do that. You don't have to necessarily put it in, in, in this. That is your, that is this council's decision with whatever you want to do. We're here to provide that service. If the directive is to go put that together, then Mayor, Council, as it's voted upon, we'll go do that. Just tell us what you want on your menu.
I, I think it, um, a couple of things that I would ask for in, in the forensic audit is acquaintances. Tying, tying maybe a elected official to a contractor. I think that, um, another thing that, that would needs to be set up is a hotline that could maybe possibly be monitored by a, uh, an outlets. We need to have a hotline set up to where somebody could send in a tip and not have to worry about being, uh, subject to disciplinary action or, or anything like that. Not saying that it would happen, but we need to set up a hotline that's, uh, that's, that, that, that people can call and they can report stuff that they know about and, and, uh, it, it just creates a, a safe environment for, for all the employees, um, or citizens or whoever. Somebody maybe lost a contract and they have information of why they didn't get the job. Um, but, but I think the, the friends, the friends thing and the vendors, I think that needs to be really, really, really looked into. I think that's a, a, a critical thing. But, um, and, and maybe Mr. Booth has experience and, and maybe if cities that have done this and what they've done to, uh, protect the employees and protect the citizens, um, or maybe retaliation.
I'm not a forensic auditor.
I don't know if you've been in a situation like that.
Tell me, tell me what you want. Get the votes from this council, from, from what residents feedback is. We'll go out and execute. I think we've shown that we can do that.
I think we got that part. Yeah, we, we got that part. Let's expedite this conversation. Uh, move it on. I think we got the part that you, your, your staff is ready for council's will. I think we got Mr. Lowry's portion on, on why he believes so far, uh, we need to move toward a forensic audit. Uh, are there any other persons that'd like to add?
Yes, I would like to, to add to that. Texas City has never had a forensic audit. That was a lie.
ISD.
Texas City, the city, you said the city. So now you're saying.
I meant Texas City, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Let's get, put that on record. Texas City, the city has never had a forensic audit. Let me say, let me say this, counsel. Um, we need to educate the public about a forensic audit. Uh, Ms. Christine de Cesar, could you give us that price of the different scope of it so that we can educate our taxpayers about it? Um, I was contacted.
That, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna. Yes, yes. Thank you for that.
And so, um, I was contacted today by the day, daily, the Galsen Daily News uh, that I bought my car with city funds and I, I, Ms. Lowry said that that's why we needed a forensic audit.
Stay on, stay on your experience. I, I got you. I got you.
But it is embarrassing when you have a sitting council person that is saying that we're doing nefarious things. And I want the record to reflect that is absolutely not true.
Okay.
Now forensic audit is when you're, when you are looking at everything. When we, when I've heard about forensic audit, because I've done my own research on it, they can be very expensive. That's why I say we need to make sure that we educate the public about that. But these allegations of corruption and I am personally offended by all these things that have been said that have been directed at me. It is absolutely absurd and it's a straight up lie and I'm not going to stand for it. We as a council, we govern ourselves. And that is horrible. Now, we need to let the, uh, constituents know Caesar about all the audits that we've had. If we have, if we have to do that again, have a workshop. Caesar, about all the audits that we've had. If we have, if we have to do that again, have a workshop on that.
Continue, continue, Miss Yancy.
Have a workshop on that about the, all the audits that we've already had. The mod, the, the ratings that we've had so that they can see what's happening. So that they will know and feel comfortable because at the end of the day, our residents do need to feel comfortable about what is occurring. But those of us who serve with diligence and with a poor heart. This has got to stop. Look at the facts, look at that. And let's show the artist. You have to sign, we have to sign affidavits. About anything about, you know, contractors, vendors, all of that, conflict of interest, all of that, if you did not know that. But I wanna make sure that we understand the price tag that goes to that. So. We, but all this, the, 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 I got yous, I'm gonna get you, wait till I have, that, that is so immature and so unprofessional, Mayor. And we are here to serve and be a servants to the people. That's what we're trying to do. I would like to, to know how that works with the city, to be honest with you. You know, so that, so that people will know, but let the record reflect. Let the record reflect. That I, that money is not, let me ask you, is money missing?
No ma'am, all the money that we have that we have expended in, in my tenure here.
One more time, is money missing?
From the money that I've been in, uh, in charge of in my tenure here, every single red cent's been accounted for. But to answer your other question that, that you mentioned, you asked me for, uh, a cost. Again, we cannot provide a cost until we know what services. The only thing we could give you is whoever has responded and. Very informal inquiries, what some of their hourly rates are. I don't know if Christine has that. But just what their hourly rates would be. That's something that we may or may not be able to have. And, and, and I can't speak to that. I know he was working on that.
From the firm, from the firm that I spoke to, they.
Ms. Turner, go ahead, Ms. Turner.
From the firm that I consulted with. They could not, they would not even speak of a cost until we provide a scope of work.
Right.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that. Uh, we, uh, hold on, were you done, Ms. Yancy?
For, for now.
Okay, Mr. Lowry.
So, um, I've actually got some phone numbers for some, uh, forensic audit, uh, firms too. And I, I think the, the, the public have made it very clear, they don't care the cost. So we can use that as a fear factor, but they've already stated, we don't care. They want the audit. You, you've heard several people say that. And let's bring up the audit again, and let's bring up these auditing firms that come in here and do the routine audit. It is not, I want the citizens to hear me out. It is not a forensic audit. It is a routine audit. We passed again. We passed the audit again and we have money unaccounted for in cash accounts and we passed the audit. We passed it. We got a green, good thumbs up. So. These auditing firms, it's a routine audit. You do them every year. It is not a forensic audit. And the most important thing you need to know from these routine audits. They can only audit the information that is given to them. That is it. If they don't have the information, they can't audit it. That's a fact. That is a fact.
You done? Okay. Ms. Yancy, did you wanna?
Mr. Booth, am I allowed to ask? Uh, Councilman Lowry, if he said that I, my BMW was paid with city funds. And he said that as a forensic audit. Councilman Lowry, did you tell the Galveston Daily News? That I bought my BMW with city funds?
No, what I, what I said was, it's very odd that a councilwoman with no money, no job. A spouse that works part-time, all of a sudden gets elected and gets a new BMW. That is a red flag to anybody with common sense.
Wow, wow. That's on the record.
It was asked and answered. Ms. Yancy, did you wanna proceed? Um, with, with any more comments?
So now we know what the motivation, I guess.
And, and the, and the, I got you.
Let, uh, hold on, Mr. Lowry, hold on just a minute. Ms. Let, she, she started speaking, so, and I'll bring you back in. Let's not disrespect the fact that she started speaking. Did you wanna finish?
To my, to my constituents of District A, I'm tired. I'm tired of the lies by this man.
Continue, Miss Yancy.
That a woman cannot afford a car. Who are you? To tell me what I can and cannot afford. I am not a slave.
Let's, let's, let's.
I'm not a slave.
Yes, ma'am. We're gonna keep it that way though. Let's keep it, let's keep it this way.
If you want a forensic audit, ask for that. Do not imply that other people are doing something wrong. That is absolutely not what we should be doing as council people. We govern ourselves. If you wanna ask for a forensic audit, do it based on that, not on your lies. And, and what you think.
Don't call me a liar. Another council meeting.
Chief.
Do you understand?
We're not gonna, we're not gonna do this.
Am I clear?
Mr. Lowry, Mr. Lowry, Mr. Lowry, Mr. Lowry. Let's stop. We're not, but, we're not, we're not, with Mr. Lowry, we're not doing this in this council. We, we, we're not doing this in this council chamber. We were all elected to represent the community. You got votes. Ms. Yancy, you got votes and I received votes. The same people somehow voted for all of us. And they didn't vote for us to argue and fight and fuss. They voted for us to repair streets. They voted for us to fund the police department. They voted for us to pass budgets. They voted for us to pass ordinances. That's the job. Whether we like each other or not, the job is to focus forward on the people that elected you and simply do the best you can. That's it. The best you can.
Thank you, Mayor.
The rest of the, what we're doing here is counterproductive. Because the people are watching and they simply want us to do the best we can.
I do apologize.
Thank you.
And, and I wanna reply to that, I got you moment. I do. And if any, if any, uh, news agency wants to speak with me, contact me, cause I do got you.
Mr. Lowry, we, we thank you for those comments. We're gonna dial, dial it back down, right? Because we all have to work together. Right, thank you. Thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna move past that. I heard from Ms., Ms. Yancy. I've heard from Mr. Lowry. Uh, there are two members who may or may not wanna speak to this item only. Forensic audit, that's Mr. Ross and Mr. Campion. They don't have to speak if they don't want to, but maybe they do. Mr. Ross, do you have any, any comments?
So a year ago, after I was elected and I came back from Washington State on a vacation. Uh, I had mentioned that I would support a forensic audit. Uh, and after listening to our newest budget session. I would specifically look in, wanna look into Fund Ninety Nine, the disaster fund and reserve fund. And I don't mind going all the way back to Hurricane Harvey. That was what I said then, and that's what I say now. And that's not anybody on here. It's not to clear my name of stuff that's been said about me. It's because. If you wanna look into something, there you go. There's what, four disasters that can be looked in. Too well before our time on this council.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Uh, Mayor Protem, did you have anything?
Everybody else has spoken. I might as well speak to my. First of all, it hurts me when we have this sort of. Back and forth on town. You, and I've said this to you guys already, you guys know that. That's, that's not how I think. That's just not how I behave. I'm just gonna leave it at that. That's not how I behave. If it's Yancy, I'm sorry for anything. You, there's. There's no need for all of that, in my opinion. Um. Uh, with regard to the issue, but what we're talking about forensic audit, right? Forensic audit. And I've said this too to you, Joseph, on this side, is that. It's not timely in my, in my mind, working on this. The. The forensic audit, for lack of a better description, the way, the way I look at them is, um. It really is a, um. It's a, if we're gonna do it, it's an intersection. It's bringing together accounting and it's bringing it together legal. They have to, they have to work hand in hand. And. We have, I always bring this up too. Uh, my hope is the city at some point. Does have a CPA because I like, just like this man has a license. We have a license with a CPA, but it begins with. And Ms. Turner is working with our CPA with regard to the audited statement. I defer to the input. That, that that licensed individual is providing us. And if in that process. They're looking at. And by the way, that, there is an issue, you hit upon it, about. Your, the audits are basically what's provided to you during COVID. Not anybody here, by the way, but during COVID, there were stories. There were stories that there was less than. Uh, but, but I, but I can't say that for real, right? It's just a story. So I'm not accusing anybody of anything. But, um. But there's also a very important process in the forensic audit because they can go into millions of dollars. Uh. There has to be a scope. There does have to be a scope. I would never tell an attorney, yeah, go back and find some cause of action. That goes back, you know, so, you know, I, I wanna sue that person or this. And there has to be a scope, but that comes from the input that the auditor. The licensed individual is providing us, the CPA. And I know Ms. Turner. Is working with them with regard to that side. Now, once there's a report. Brought, brought to us. Then let's, let's determine what would be next steps. And there may be, uh, there may be a. A far more, it doesn't go by the term forensic audit. You can remember forensic audit is this intersection of accounting and law. Because if we have, if we somehow determine that, um. There are people, there, someone has given themselves a pay increase and nobody knows about it. Right? And how far that goes back? That's, that's one example. And, um. Or, um. Or speaking to, to your point, that, um, perhaps there is some sort of self-dealing on contracts. I don't think anybody here, God knows no one, involved, but, but there has to be a scope. Can be open ended, but I'm gonna defer to the licensed CPA to provide that input. On that. And if at that point, there's a report provided. Then we are ready to take the next steps. And I'm not closing the door to that, but there has to be parameters is what I'm, what I'm saying on that side.
And, and Mayor Protem and Council, our C, um. Our auditing firm will be available tomorrow at noon. He will be on, online to answer any questions because we have found some things. You know. That were, you know, reported incorrectly because the report wasn't right. It wasn't because something was done incorrectly. It just maybe that particular report was not accurate. So we'll, we'll hear more of that tomorrow.
And Ms. Turner.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, let, let's, uh, Ms. Ross, let Mayor Protem finish and then we'll bring you back in.
And, 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 and she just indicated, that's exactly what I'm looking for, right? That they're working, they're two professionals there. And then that licensed individual coming back and saying, yeah, this is a red flag here. This is a red flag here. And at that point too, there's probably some conversation with our local council as well, be aware of this. And, uh, and a report made to us with a recommendation from everybody coming back. And then we go from there. That's how I look at it, Joseph.
Hold, hold on a minute, uh, Mr. Lowry, let's let Mr. Ross in and then I'll let you come back in. Mr. Ross?
Ms. Turner, what I'm hearing you say is there have been some procedural issues that have been found. Are you working on changing those procedural issues so they do not reoccur again?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah. Ms. Lowry, did you wanna add something?
Uh, just, Mr. Campion, thank you for your opinion and, and I agree with you on how, uh, you know, procedural and, and, and it makes sense and. I think we need to work towards that, but, um. There's just so many things and I, and I get, I get worked up about it because it's a very passionate thing of mine. That, um, you know, we, we owe it to the taxpayers. I'm a taxpayer. I live here. And, and we owe it to the taxpayers. We, we need to be accountable. Um, right, wrong or indifferent, they, they deserve it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's just a matter of fact, it's. We've heard the people speak tonight, but I, I value your opinion and, and thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Ross, um.
I would like a form of apology from Councilman Lowry.
Let's not, let's, let's not.
He actually said something about my husband. My husband is a fourth time pastor.
Ms. Yancy, Ms. Yancy.
I would like an apology.
Ms. Yancy, this is not the venue. This is not the venue. It's not the venue.
Can someone put that on the agenda, please?
Let's, let's, let's move to, into, uh, trying to bring this discussion to a barn. I will say this. I'll let the mayor, Mayor Protem finish and then I'll.
Cause now my family's involved.
I'll let the mayor protest, Ms. Yancy, Ms. Yancy, please. We understand. Mayor Protem, you wanna? Let me, let me say this. Who, who's that speaking?
I'm sorry, that wasn't me, Mayor. I was coughing. I'm sorry.
Oh, that, that's okay. Le- let me say this, guys. Um, and, and I'm going to attempt to be as brief as I possibly can be. A lot of what we are dealing with, uh, is politics. Uh, on the exterior of this, this venue, this dais outside of here. Politics are at play in the way that we phrase things and how we say things. Uh, some of the, uh. Positions that are taken by members of our community. But when we get inside, when we get on this dais. The politics portion of, of how our government works has to stop. And we have to move toward the business of governing. Governing requires us to get along with each other. Governing requires us to listen to each other. But more importantly, in my twenty years of experience, government requires, no matter how we feel. Or what conditions we find ourselves in, we have to try. To keep the people before us and to do the best we can for our constituents. That's the job. That's what it is. Tonight. Ms. Yancy certainly, uh, has experienced a lot of different things and my heart hurts for her. Uh, and I understand where she's coming from. And nobody likes to be accused of things that they did not do, uh, or be, uh, uh. Or that it be suggested that they've done something wrong when, uh, perhaps they have not. I get that. I understand that. I can understand Mr. Lowry's frustration with wanting a forensic audit. Believing, uh, for whatever reason, uh, that this is something that our community needs. I get both sides. But until we can come together. And work through these issues, the issues, not, not the issues that we have with one another, but the issues that affect the people of Lamarck. We are doing them a disservice. We're doing them a huge disservice. Now, on the audit, on the audit, here are my thoughts. Budget projections. Certainly, uh, do not make. Uh, an accurate accounting of city finances. In other words. Uh, if the administration has gotten all the budget projections wrong, that still does not necessarily indicate. That there is monies missing. What it does say is. The administration should have done a better job at preparing their budget presentations. That's what it actually says. Does not mean that there are monies missing. It just means that perhaps there could have been a better. Job in the process from which you used to be able to get the numbers, Mr. Garcia. That you presented to us. And I don't think that I've heard anyone. And I don't think that I've heard anyone here up here on this dais, uh, any member of this council uh, be afraid of or fight against a routine audit or even a forensic audit. That has never happened. I've never heard Mr. Ross or Ms. Yancy, Mr. Campion or Mr. Lowry say that they did not want or even actively fought or passively fought against a forensic audit. But I think the problem is anytime you use or we use or someone uses the idea of forensic audit and that is somehow associated with a member of staff or council in a negative light, I think human nature is for people to resist. Right? Nobody wants to feel like someone is blaming them for something that they didn't do. And so there's possibly some resistance because people believe uh, that they have not done anything wrong. Uh, and so they don't understand or agree with the nature that these things have come about. However, at the end of all of this, uh, the fact remains uh, that uh, we have not been accurate. We've not been accurate with numbers. Doesn't mean anything's wrong. Doesn't mean that anybody did anything wrong. It it does. Well, I I I agree with that, ma'am, but the context from which I'm saying is doesn't mean that anybody took any money. That's what I'm saying. I, even more than what you have just said, I have been the hardest on uh, City Manager Garcia these last two or three budget weeks. Ask anybody who's been here. Yes, ma'am. I I get that. Let me finish. Let me finish my comments, but 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 I'm with you. I'm not suggesting that anybody, that no one made mistakes. What I am suggesting is those mistakes does not, they don't have to be criminal in nature, right? They don't have to be nefarious in nature. They're mistakes, right? And audits, audits can uncover mistakes. You get what I'm saying? That's what I'm trying to say. So artists can, let let me finish. So artists can uncover mistakes. Uh, and from that standpoint, I I think it is all, it's a good idea to start the the discussions that Ms. uh, Turner uh, has suggested to start those discussions that uh, Mr. Garcia is asking for. Because ultimately, and truly, guys, I want y'all to hear me when I say this and I'll be done. This is on the city council. This is on us. Because where we are right now versus where we need to be to have a forensic audit, to Joe's point, to Mayor Protem's point, we don't have a scope yet. We have an idea of the fact that we want one, but we don't have a scope. Where do you get scopes from? Scopes come from council. So this is just the first step. The first step is the numbers on projections in our budget are not accurate. And so now it's incumbent upon the council to start digging. How do we do that? We can look at Fund 12. We can look at Fund 99. We can look at every fund in this budget, this proposed budget. We can open them up. We can ask Mr. Garcia to provide additional information. We can ask Ms. Turner to provide additional information. We can do all sorts of things. We can bring that information to council. We can pass out that information to every member that's before us and we can all read along together. We can keep digging until we find the scope. So what I'm saying to you, in my 20 years of experience, yes, we have been alerted. Yes, we are moving down a road of potentially having a forensic audit, but not until we have scope. We need scope. How do we get scope? One more time, this council, Mr. Lowry, Mayor Protem, Campion, Ms. Yancy, Mr. Ross and myself. We have to do our due diligence and dig enough to find the scope for a forensic audit. So while we're on our way, Mr. Lowry, in in my opinion, we still have work to do. Are we gonna wait? No, we're not gonna wait. Next meeting, we're gonna have representatives from our auditing firm on tomorrow to do what? To start that digging. A lot of people have said, it does not matter the cost, and that's probably true. That that's probably, yes, ma'am, it'll be on YouTube. And that's probably true for a lot of people. It does not matter the cost. But the cost should matter. It shouldn't determine whether or not we do it. Right? But what it should determine is if we're being fiscally responsible. Because how are we not going to be physically fiscally responsible when we want an audit? Because we want to root out more fiscal irresponsibility. Doesn't make sense. What makes sense is being fiscally responsible, the council working harder, doing our due diligence, opening these line items, getting all in Mr. Garcia's business, and then presenting that to an auditing firm. What do we call that? We call that scope. Let's move on, guys. Nine six, TML Board of Trustees. There's no action, again, because of the way it's worded. Uh, but but for those of you, let's clear this up. For those of you that are interested in the forensic audit, meet us here tomorrow, uh, however you want, 12 o'clock. We are going to be more, we're doing more uh, with our budget workshop and we're going to be digging so that we can find what? So that we can find scope. Okay? Again, nine six, TML Board of Trustees election, casting votes for the Texas Municipal League and the Governmental Risk Pool Board of Trustees. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, just a quick point.
Yes.
Section, section nine does have the correct language that would allow you to take action on this particular item. I do believe.
On on nine?
Uh, yes.
Okay, let's back up, guys. Let's back up.
On, on, yeah, on this TML.
But not on eight, not on eight?
Not on eight, not on nine.
Very good. Very good. Let's back up. And Council, I will entertain a motion uh, for us to uh, visit with uh, our auditing firm. And I believe Ms. Ms. uh, Turner, you said that you spoke with an auditing firm?
Yes, sir. I did. I have.
I will entertain a motion for us to to speak with our auditing firm uh, as well as uh, initially, Mr. Lowry, initially, uh, the auditing firm that Ms. Turner uh, has been speaking with uh, to get more information on what a forensic audit would look like for the city of Lamarck. I will entertain that motion. I will entertain a motion. Did you make the motion?
I made a motion.
Make a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second to uh, meet with, visit in public, uh, our auditing firm as well as initially, the auditing firm that Ms. Turner uh, has uh, has been in contact with. And there is a
Fair, fair.
I'm moving too fast. Slow me down. Slow me down.
I want to raise an issue about our procurement policies. I I don't have it in front of me. This is professional services. And so my question is, would you have to go out for bid? I'm just thinking about.
Just to visit with him?
Well, just.
Yes.
If you're gonna, as long as you're not a warning or contract, you're fine.
No, sir.
Okay.
What 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 I'm trying to do is Mr. Lowry has brought up some questions. So I'm trying to get somebody here to answer some of those questions from our uh, and then the forensic specialist to be able to.
Well, I suggested you, your motion be to so we're we're now moving to solicit advice from our auditing firm.
Yeah.
As to, they they have.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
They with regard to what is a forensic audit, the scope of work, what is, what's their role in this? That's that's sort of information, but I agree, we don't, we don't need to bring in.
Yeah, we're not trying, all we're trying to do and help us do this is we're trying to start the conversation.
Okay with that.
Okay. Did did you get that, uh, care what what Mayor Protem, that was some good stuff he put in?
Uh, there's gonna be, there's going, we've rewritten a motion uh, to solicit advice from the city's auditing firm regarding the process of uh, forensic audit.
As well as the, Ms. Turner, what was the name of the firm you contacted?
Uh, I can't recall right now. I have to look it up really quickly.
Hold on, hold on. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Because of procurement policies, what I don't want to do, because all.
Say anything.
And that's fine. So foundation would be to start with your current auditing process now. Because that that person goes to bid, we don't want anything nefarious to be alleged because they had an unfair advantage over any other firm that would complete.
That's fair.
Should they want to put a bid in and I, we don't know if they are.
That's fair. So we're gonna. Okay, that's fair. Ms. Yancy, did you, did I hear you say something?
All I was gonna say is our current auditor would be disqualified for bidding on a forensic audit because.
Anyway.
The anyway.
All right. Got you. Got you. Got you. Ms. Yancy, did you want to add something?
I just have a a point of point of information. I think you already said it, that we've never, no one on this council has said it. They're against an audit. What we're against is being accused of being a criminal. So uh, the the article isn't a paper, Mayor. There's a mistake on it and I want to make sure that we clarify. The city uh, it was moved by uh, Joe Campion, I guess about two years ago, about the security surveillance that I have at my home, that the city uh, did uh, put on my home. There's a, there's a mistake in the paper.
Okay, that, yeah, yeah, yeah. You could do, you can clear that up.
I need to clear that.
You can clear that up in your closing comments. Yeah, yeah.
There's a mistake in the paper.
To get yourself, get you, that's right.
I just want to make sure that I.
Yes, ma'am. We will let you do that in your closing comments. Now, all right, guys. Trying to take action, uh, sounds like the majority of council is uh, wanting to hear a motion that we meet with our existing auditing firm to discuss the possibility and the process of moving forward with a forensic audit. Did that sound anything like what we're talking about? You good with that? You good with that?
There's a motion on the floor.
Well, that's, okay, well.
He has to state the motion.
So so, Mr. Ross, would you withdraw your motion? Please, your second. Mr. Ross?
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, uh, Mr. Lowry, would you then make that motion?
Make a motion to meet with our current auditing firm on a scope.
You ought to withdraw your first one first.
Oh, I withdraw my first one.
Okay. Be with the current auditing firm on the process and scope of a potential forensic audit. Uh, we're gonna do that in public. We'll do that in public. Okay. All right. Now I need a second.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, council. Nine six, TML Board of Trustees election, casting votes for the Texas Municipal League and the Governmental Risk Pool Board of Trustees election. Kiara advised me today that we don't necessarily have to take action on this tonight. She wanted us to see the names, get familiar with the names. We can take action at a later meeting.
Yes, sir. So these ballots are not due until uh, I believe mid-September. But I know we've done this in the past and you guys always wanted additional time with it, so I just put it on as soon as I received it to give you all time to do what you needed to do in terms of making your selection. I would like to put this back on the agenda for the September 9th meeting, so we have time to get it back to TML in order for your votes to be.
Very good. Counsel, do we have any questions?
Can I get a printout of the names?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's let's uh, let's move now unless unless council wants to make a motion uh, on item nine six. We'll move to item nine seven, Emergency 90 Day Contract for Disaster Consulting 2024, Ratifying a 90-Day Emergency Contract Signed by the Mayor as Emergency Management Director for Disaster Consulting and Grant Administration. Uh, Kyle, I believe this is the contract that uh, you had in the City Managers Report last meeting?
Yes. I'm good. Uh, I'm I'm here for any questions, but yes, this is a 90-day emergency contract that we signed uh, under emergency management for consulting and administration help with basically FEMA and FEDOM. Which we, this this contract in particular uh, is awarded, was awarded to Grant Works or we gave it to Grant Works. We we talked to them. They have uh, knowledge of our city as our grant administrator already, a working relationship with our staff and our finance staff. And they have a department that is um, over PA, Public Assistance, which is the FEMA stuff. So there's, as you all know, FEMA has very hard deadlines on certain things and they they, I brought them in to help us make sure we meet our deadlines and don't miss out. Any questions?
Any questions for Kyle as relates to this 90-day contract? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'm moved.
There a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nine eight, uh, RFP for Disaster Consulting and the Grant Administration, authorizing a request for proposal for Disaster Consulting and Grant Administration. Kyle?
Uh, once again, so uh, the emergency contract is for 90 days. Outside of the 90 days, we no longer have um, an agency that can help us with public assistance. So this was me putting together an RFP to go out for proposals um, for a company to come in and help us with disaster consulting uh, and grants as as far as um, emergency management, related mitigation grants. That's what I'm looking for. Um, so this is basically the RFP that uh, we put together and the deadlines, if approved uh, by council for us to go ahead and publish to the city website to go out for bids.
Any questions for Kyle? Hearing none, we will entertain a motion.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item 10, City Manager Report. A submitted report to update council and community on the standard operations of ci- of the city. Report can be acknowledged as a whole or discussed at the pleasure of council. Council, as always, I'm going to read off these uh, six items, five items. Uh, if you are interested in speaking to one of them, please let me know. 10-1, July 2024 Library Statistics. 10-2, July 2024 Municipal Court Stats. 10-3, July 2024 Public Works Utility Department Statistics. 10-4, August 2024 City of Lamarck Sales Tax Report. 10-5, Galveston County Crime Rate Ranking 2020 through 2023.
Hold that, please.
Very good. Item 10-5, uh, Ms. Yancy.
I just want to talk about that slide. I I just uh, to give kudos to our uh, police staff and all the ones that have helped in the area of safety. I know, Mayor, you uh, you're saying is always trying to become one of the most safest cities in Texas and if you look at the report, Lamarck, uh, Lamarck in 21 was number two with the highest crime. In 22, they were the highest crime. No, yeah, number two. And in 23, we were number four. So that's kudos that our our uh, crime is going down. And I think we need to know where we are in the ranking so we can come with facts when there are people spreading false lies about our city. So to the young lady that said that about the city of Lamarck earlier, we are working on that and that does show some improvement. So when you hear that negative connotation, you can say that is, that is changing and it's hopefully it's going to get better. So that one day we can say that we are one of the safest cities in Texas. So I want, I wanted to make sure that we put that on the record and we show that uh, to show the hard work and the and the hours that's going into making sure that our city is safer. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, sorry. On 10-3, I missed.
You missed your call, huh? All right, we'll go back. Go ahead.
Well, I, once again, under the guise of, we see it here, but we're not doing a good job of pushing out the information. This is from Public Works. To be clear, pro- project updates and and Mr. Garcia, this is the stuff we need to see on our website. You know, people need to know, there, this is what we've accomplished in plain English. This is a co- accomplished, right? So the West Lawn Stormwater is is 100% complete. And that was funded by GLO. It should have a value there. There's no value of of what represented in grand dollars. Uh, Sanitary Sewer Sewer Reduction, the manholes, they're 35% complete. I I and Rick, for me, is it, are you following a map? Is it, are we starting from this end of the city and we're working toward this end? Tell us more. I'm I'm curious. I want to know if I, if I get someone from District B saying, you know, my my manhole doesn't have a cover. When are you gonna come? Stuff like that. Lift station upgrades. When are you gonna come? Stuff like that. Uh, lift station upgrades. He said pumps on order, site work to begin soon. Well, once again, that's the funded. Uh, well, they're here, the main street, pu- promote these things, is all I'm saying. They're there. Uh, there's a long list, folks, and, uh, Public Works is involved in it. Thank you, Mayor, that's all.
Very good. Council, we'll move now to goods, uh, items, uh, for the Good of the Order. Uh, Mr. Garcia, did you have anything for the Good of the Order?
Uh, Mayor, not at this time, just reminding everybody that we will be closed on Monday for Labor Day. Um, and we'll resume regular business hours starting on Tuesday. Also, we do have the pleasure of announcing, Kyle, could you put that up real quick, under CPR on, on the thing? Uh, as you remember, part of one of our Safe City initiatives that we took whole hand that the rest of us can do that don't wear a badge has to do with CPR training. So we are inviting, um, the community to now start joining us. We're almost fully trained as a staff. Our goal is to be, have every single employee CPR certified. We want to extend that to all of our board members as well. Uh, volunteers and also to the residents. The flyer is available. And, uh, we do encourage everybody to be able to be CPR certified, so God forbid an emergency occur. They may be able to provide aid while our EMS arrives. Thank you.
Very good. Request for, and, and announcements requested by Mayor Councilmembers, items replaced on future council agendas, announcements on city events, community interests. Uh, five five one dot four one five. Items of community interest include expressions of thanks, congratulations, or condolences. Information regarding holiday schedules, and honorary or salutary recognition of a public official, public employer, or other cit- citizen. Except that the discussion regarding a change in the status of a person's public office or public employment, it's not an honorary or salutary recognition for the purposes of this subdivision. Reminder about an upcoming event organized or sponsored by the governing body. Information regarding a social ceremony or community event, uh, organized or sponsored, uh, by, uh, the governing body. Information regarding a social ceremony, oh, excuse me, community event organized or sponsored by an entity other than, other than the governing body. And that was attended. Or scheduled to be attended by a member of the governing body or an official employee of the municipality or county. Announcements involving an imminent threat to public health and safety of the people in the municipality or county that has arisen after uh, posting, the posting of the agenda, uh, tonight. Uh, we will start with, I don't see Mr. Lowry.
Start with me.
We'll start with Mayor Pro Tem, and then we'll come back and pick up Mr. Ross.
So, Kyle, I want to present to you, and as City Secretary, I completed my mandated, mandated cybersecurity awareness training, and there's my certificate. We have until the end of the month for all of us to complete this training.
I already did it.
And there's a report that's due by August thirty-first, but I'm giving this to you. That's mine.
Yes.
Okay? And I'll, I'll give it to her, let's carry on that side. Uh, I want to congratulate, uh, at the opportunity to go and attend the Neighborhood Baptist Church, uh, fiftieth anniversary, outstanding services. I love the music as well, too. Uh, very different than Catholic services, by the way, right? And, uh, but, uh, the, the music was, brought joy. So I guess that's all I could say. And, uh, but I want to congratulate them on being an important part of Lamarck for fifty years. And, uh, Pastor Franklin there in his church, and he has worked, um, I know personally with me on many items uh, of, um, of community, of hurricane response and feeding as well, too. So I congratulate the, the congregation, and their many honored guests for that event. And, um, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Ross?
Um, look forward to hopefully finishing our budget tomorrow, please. Uh, everything that I normally say, B F W's having a fish fry on the seventh, noon till we're out of fish. Please come help. We need all the help we can get to try to keep that organization within the City of Lamarck. Uh, we're struggling right now. The fourteenth of September, they're having a community yard sale, ten bucks a spot, ten dollar donation to the auxiliary for a later brown bag auction that they'll do to try to raise money. Call the, call the bar and have them put your name on signup sheet for the spot and pay when you get there on that Saturday. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Ms. Yancy?
So Labor Day is, uh, coming up, so enjoy that weekend. You said, this is the time I can address that, okay. So while I was sitting here in the middle of council, uh, there, there's an article out now that, uh, speaks to what was, what I asked Council Lowry, Councilman Lowry. Um, there's a mistake in there. They asked a question about, um, is, is the city paying for security surveillance at my home? And the city is, so they're gonna correct that. And that's due to the harassment that my family and I have had to endure due to Joseph Lowry as a citizen, and that continues as a councilman.
Ms. Yancy, keep it. Your experience, don't name names.
Uh, okay.
But we get it.
That person.
We get it.
To my son, who's one of four. This is what a Christian looks like, because Satan is an accuser, and he never brings receipts. And I want you to know that the Bible has called us to love people unconditionally, in spite of what they do to us. To my constituency, that is the majority minority district, these are the times that we are in. Where we are being called thieves without proof, and our families are being attacked. And I have done much to protect my city, so as not to make her look so bad. But this is the truth. This is America, and these are the times. And you're seeing what racism looks like at its finest. But we not going back. We're gonna stand up against it. We're gonna call in the name of Jesus, and we're gonna pray like we ain't never prayed before. But for those of you who stand by silently and say nothing, it is acceptance. In a book that I wrote, I have a quote that says, "Our prayers can go places that our hands can't go." So I ask you to pray for our city. That was my quote, that we must pray. For those who attack us. The Bible says to rejoice when you are in trials and temptation and being persecuted. So we will rejoice. To this council, I ask that we do the right thing and govern ourselves and model the expectation that we want to see. I want to personally thank Council, Councilman James Osteen and his wife, who've been a beacon of strength for me and my family, when you didn't have to be. To my mother who's watching and is in tears. And my father who's long gone, passed. They taught me to stand up and bear up and love in the spite of hate. Because I'm gonna do my job. Mayor Sean Skipworth resigned in Dickinson because of the harassment. No American should stand for this from any party. But let the record reflect, Kim Jones Yancy ain't going nowhere. And I'm gonna stand and make sure Lamarck is the best city she can be. And to District A, let's get ready to my mayor who's had to stand under unbearable harassment. And I don't have your view, but I applaud you, Mary Bell, for the love you show people who don't love you. I applaud you for the wisdom and the restraint that you show. And to our staff, I do apologize, because you deserve better. You have worked hard, and you keep working harder. You keep reaching the standard. Thank you. We see you. We are praying for you. And I do apologize. We want to make sure that we serve our residents and make Lamarck better, get our roads fixed, infrastructure, make sure safety is going now. That's why we're here. That's why we're here. I love you all, and I love everyone on this council, and there's nothing you can do about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lowry, you were, you stepped out. Did you want to?
Yeah, um.
Have your time?
Thank you, Mayor Bell. Uh, uh, Mr. Garcia, was there cameras purchased, purchased by the city for any council member's home?
Yeah, at request, put that in a request, Mr. Lowry, because this is request. He can't, he can't.
Can't answer?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But you can request it.
I'm, I'm requesting that, and just so you know, uh, there's a system that the city uses for cell phones that's tracked, and we already have the answer to that. So just know when you reply to it that we know, I know the answer.
I've already spoken to that.
We're not doing it. We're not, we're not doing that. We're not doing that.
And, um, I also, I also heard a, a statement that said, "I don't have the receipts." And, and I want to correct that statement, because I do have the receipts.
Show them.
Just, no, I'm mayor, I, I listened to it. It's my turn.
Yeah, but we.
I'm not gonna make any attacks.
Okay, there you go.
I'm gonna state, I'm gonna state facts. I do have receipts. And in those receipts, I have copies of checks that were written and given to Kim Yancy for cash. The district attorney has a copy.
I would love to see.
I have text messages. I have everything involved, and so does our district attorney. So when she says I don't have receipts, I have the receipts. Dishonesty is why I want a forensic audit.
I am absolutely good on that. I am absolutely.
Let's, 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 okay, alright, okay, alright, okay. We're not, again, guys.
Those are.
Again, again, we're, we're not gonna do this anymore. Seriously, we're not gonna do this anymore.
That's a hefty allegation.
We're not gonna, Chief Argon. Guys, we're not doing this anymore. We get it. You all don't get along. Mr. Lowry, you were elected by the people of District C. They want you to fix their streets. Ms. Yancy, you were elected by the people of District A. They want you to continue cutting crime. That is the job. Now, moving forward, we had, what we had, ma'am, I can't right now. I can't, I can't. Ma'am, I cannot, I cannot, I cannot. I can't. Ma'am, I cannot. Sir, would you, ma'am? We're not doing this. We are not doing this. Ms. Chief Argon. Please. We are not doing this. We are not three, four, and five years old. We are adults. We can get along and work for the common good of the people of Lamarck. Please. It's streets, it's crime, it's drainage, and it might be forensic audit. I don't know, and I don't care. But this back and forth that we're having like we're in fifth grade will not be tolerated. Mr. City Manager, I am asking you for the next meeting to beef up our police presence. I'm asking you to train or have Mr. Argon train our officers so that when the presider directs, action is taken. Please.
Yes, ma'am.
This was coming to a head. Three years, now it, now it's here. You said your piece, Ms. Yancy, we heard you. Mr. Lowry, you said your piece, we heard you. Moving forward, I'm letting everybody on this dais know. If we get out of hand, the police department will come and escort us. Now, Mr. Lowry, did you have anything else that you wanted to share? Please keep it away from Ms. Yancy. Please do that, so that we can move to the next thing that we're trying to do.
Oh, sir, Mayor. I just want to represent the city and, uh, fight crime.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Now, I am going to end with my comments. I've said a lot just right there in that, in that little interim. I'm not gonna beat a dead horse, uh, not gonna lecture anybody. Uh, I believe that we all are old enough to do the right thing. Having said that, I did want to remind everybody that this Monday coming up, I believe it's this Monday, is, is Labor Day, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And so you said, you said city offices will be closed, right? But certainly we want to honor the men and women, uh, that have made our country what it is today. The worker, the American worker, for all of the sacrifices that have been made, uh, for all of the wonderful infrastructure uh, that has been built, for all of the services that have been provided. Again, the American worker, uh, deserves our thanks, our gratitude, and our appreciation. Uh, and lastly, on tomorrow, tomorrow, is it twelve noon? Is that the time?
Yes.
Tomorrow at twelve noon, we will resume our budget workshop. Same place, the same people. Some of us may be wearing the same attire. Please come. Ms. Erin, you're invited. All of us come. That's okay. That's okay. We'll have it, we'll have it recorded. Please come. It'll be on YouTube. Yes, ma'am. And let your voice be heard. We don't have all the answers up here. We need your comments, your opinions, your thoughts, and your ideas. Okay? Now, uh, moving past that, Mr. Garcia, did you have anything else before we move into the next phase of our service?
No, nothing further, Mayor, just to remind everybody that if they are listening on, on YouTube that they can't comment. If they want to make a comment during any time during a remarks session, they would have to do so from Zoom.
Very good. Important, important part. So now, if you're watching via Zoom tomorrow, excuse me, via YouTube tomorrow, and you want to comment, you would simply have to switch over to the Zoom platform. Kyle can recognize you, and you can be heard, and you can participate as well.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Very good. We are going to now move into recess into our executive session. And that's the reason why we made our comments, uh, before we moved to the back. Executive session, the City Council for the City of Lamarck, Texas, deserves the right to adjourn into executive session at any time during this meeting to discuss any of the matters listed above. As authorized by the Texas Government Code, section five five one dot zero seven one, consultation with attorney, five five one dot zero seven two, deliberations about real property, five five one dot zero seven three, deliberations about gifts and donations, five five one dot zero seven four, personnel matters, five five one dot zero seven six, deliberations about security devices, and five five one dot zero eight seven, economic development. Tonight, council, we have two items. Section five five one dot zero seven one, consultation with attorney, and section five five one dot zero seven four, personnel matters. Uh, we are, is it, are we recessing, Joe? Is that what we do? We are recessing this regular meeting at ten twenty-seven, uh, and we are, uh, moving into our executive session.
Good morning.
Oh, well, not yet. Thank you for your patience. I am 13 actions taken from executive session 13-1, section 551.071.
You got to, you got to come back.
I am so tired, I'm sorry. What, now, tell me again, what, we are back in executive, executive session at what time?
11:37.
11:37, thank you, Ms. Nance. Now, actions taken from executive session 13-1, section 551.071. Consultation with attorney, potential litigation regarding Elizabeth Koo. I believe that the council will take no action on this, no action on this. Which leaves us to item 13-2. Section 551.074 Personnel Matters for the purpose of hearing a complaint, a charge against an officer or employee, council member District C. There was a lot said in the back. Certainly, we are now here to potentially act on what was said in the back. Ms. Yancy, I believe that you wanted to share a statement first.
So, one thing that I want to say tonight is that this council is working, doing our best to work together. And we are going to the complaint has to do, and her mother, the mother came to say what happened to her. She's a member of District D. And we find that deplorable. We find it unacceptable that a sitting council person would go after a city employee, and especially a minor city employee. Because we know that Mr. Lowery is a new council person, and he's new to governing. And he has to change his behavior to understand what's appropriate and to not put this city in a, in a place of liability where we can be sued. We're going to take a slow walk. And that slow walk involves him going to that family, sitting down, and apologizing. And if he does not do that, then we will move for censure. One of the things I think is important is what we call restorative justice. And in the church, we call it restorative ministry. Where you give an opportunity for people to change their behavior. And as we have seen some of the posts, the inappropriate actions by District C. Now, I'm asking District C to monitor this behavior, you other people. But I do not want this young mother and her young son to believe that we believe this is acceptable. It's absolutely not. But in the air of cooperation, working together, and because we are going to show the love of Christ, we are asking him to sit down with that family and apologize, not just for the post, but some of the other things that you've done as well. And if you cannot do that, since you, you put a big Bible in front of you, you can have the word, but the word, if it's not in your heart, doesn't mean anything. And so, there are many more complaints. But I hope that he sees that we are trying to work with him, and we're going to give him an opportunity to make it right. Now, Mayor and his council, if he doesn't, it may be something we have to talk about again. But this is his opportunity to do that. Thank you, Council.
Any others tonight?
I foresee in the very near future, late night council meetings, there is no person on this planet that I would ever ever, any place that I would allow somebody over the age of 18 to say something about somebody under the age of 18. I know, I understand his game and his ploy sometimes. But doesn't stay around for the end. Sooner or later, we're going to have to get to the end with or without him here. That'll come sooner than, rather than later, but it's going to have to happen. I hope he sits down with some of us and we can come to an understanding on how we need to fix the behavior before it has to get farther along. Giving the man one more benefit of the doubt. Done that for lots of people. I'm going to make a motion that we will table this till a further event.
Yeah, before you do that, we, we're going to, before you do that, James, we're going to see if Mayor Portman has something he'd like to say.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thanks, fellow council members. The the action that was discussed was censure. Currently, it's incorporated within our, our guidelines. I'm being a newer member, don't quite understand it entirely. But I do have from my background, a strong sense of the need to have evidence and something in front of me. And in any process of filing a complaint, that's where we begin, gathering evidence. And as part of this complaint process, it makes us efficient, it makes the complaint effective. And, and I personally am not quite there at this. I am very much, however, I'm making it very, very clear, that we, I personally have my standard. I would never involve a family member, I would never involve a youth. Certainly, as council persons, we're not I'm learning, and I didn't even know this, but I'm learning, this is the new, the new Joe, the new Lamarck. That it's probably better that if someone innocently comes up to me and says, "Look, I'm applying for a job in Lamarck, and, and maybe I'm a policeman, and they've known me. Can you give me a referral or something?" I should probably keep my mouth shut. Because it's not, it's not something that I should be involved in, period. And, and the flip side of that, that's the same standard that we should all have as council people with regard to any, any person, especially the sons or daughters of any of our residents, of any person. So in my sense, respect is number one, is number one. This evening, I will say, and I said it at that time, that there was great disrespect, there's great disrespect. We don't need that. You know, I'll be very clear on that. That's not how I operate. And I don't think any of us, as we get to know each other, operate and would agree upon. But that's another issue for another day, right? So, having said that, Mayor, all, all, I think to follow up on the comments of the, the eloquent comments by councilperson Yancy. And who was certainly hurt this evening, as well as no less the, perhaps the mother of the, of the young man that, but in my sense, this is me, since let's, this is a, an area that we don't that we refrain from even getting involved. And this is some from someone who I just put good news on social media. I don't do anything else, right? I give you information, facts, here's the link. Did you know that your social security numbers were, were breached? Mine were. What do you do about it? Here's what you do. And, and refrain from everything else associated with that. So Mayor, I don't, I don't, I look for you for guidance and your wisdom in this, in this regard. I'm not sure if a motion is appropriate or not. I don't know, I don't know at this point.
Yeah, let me, let me say this. Thank you for that, Mayor Portman. Censures are a tool that councils use to make distinctions, to draw contrasts. Those contrasts are drawn between what the majority body believes their their responsibilities are to the public. My experience that censures to be effective have to be unanimous. Council has to stand as a whole to declare in censorship what they believe is a body. We are not there yet. There's still work to do as it relates to this council being unanimous on this particular issue. I believe we all believe. Just, just listening tonight at the
Just, just listening tonight at the folks around this dais, I believe we all believe that it is inappropriate to make comments about any city employee. I believe we all believe it's inappropriate to make any commentary about any child in our community. Mayor Proton, I believe, just said that. I wanna say to Ms. Yancy that I certainly feel her frustration and her pain, and I am sad for her today. Because no person wants to be mistreated. And no person wants to be characterized in a way that they are not. And I know how that feels. I've dealt with this for the better part of twenty years. And I've learned, past the answer the hard way, this passage of scripture from the Apostle Paul, where he shares with us that he has learned to die daily. And what that means, without giving you a sermon, is that through his life, he learned how to not react to those things that provoked him. Those things that incited all sorts of hurt and pain and belief. Things that if he were to allow himself to be caught up in, they would ultimately have destroyed him. And in politics, you have to learn that. You have to learn how to not allow so many of those things that have been directed toward you to impact and affect you. And we're all human, and so it's hard for us to do that. But it's what we have to learn, and it's how we have to grow so that we can move forward. It is unacceptable, let me say this. Some of the things that have happened in our city, and in particular on this council here in recent months, and it is up to our council to move forward by raising the standard. Now, we need five people to do that. The four of us cannot raise the standard of decorum for a five-member council. All of us need to buy into what it means to be a council member in the city of Lamarck. And if we all buy into what it means to be a council member in the city of Lamarck, then our first and foremost role would be to do no harm to the city. To do no harm to its citizen. So, this council is going to have to, as I close these comments, this council is going to have, not just us four, but all five of us. We're going to have to learn how to communicate with one another and to communicate with our constituency and those beyond in a way that does no harm. Right now, we are communicating in a way that does harm. I'm sad for Ms. Smalls, and I'm sad for her children because of the things that they have reported to this council. And I look forward toward a better day. I believe, Mayor Proton, you asked for a, a motion. I believe that I would like to bridge the gap, if we can, between what Ms. Yancy's request is and your willingness to make a motion, and perhaps that motion should be some sort of a motion that, that urges requests that council member of District C make a formal apology to Mrs. Smalls. I think that perhaps would be the first step of trying to move forward in a constructive way. And to Ms. Yancy's point, if somehow we are unable to motivate council member of District C to do this, then perhaps there has to be an entirely different conversation. Ms. Yancy, I saw you in the back, and then I'm gonna leave it alone, I saw you in the back, and I saw how frustrated you were. And I would like to say that I appreciate your willingness to try to go about this a different way tonight. When you could have chosen to do all sorts of things. You chose to, in the spirit of Christianity, encourage another human being to repent, to apologize, right? And to try to move forward in a better way. And so, if there is a person or persons that would like to make that motion and second that motion, I will entertain that motion.
Motion table?
Motion to table? Is there, are there any other motions before us?
Just to be clear, the council member is not willing to entertain a motion encouraging the District C rep to to apologize to Ms. Small?
I will entertain a motion that he he apologized to Ms. Small, but
Table censorship?
Yes.
I see, I see, okay. Well, that makes sense then.
So, your motion then is that we, that the council
That council writes a formal plan for him to
Apologize.
Apologize to Ms. Small, and we table the censorship.
Okay.
I, I, I'll
Second that.
I'll second that, and, and I like that it's written. I think that's one of the challenges we're having here. If we're doing a better job, these things need to be set forth. Mr. Booth.
Understood.
There is a motion and a second. We cannot discuss the table portion of the motion, we can discuss the apology portion. Are there any persons wishing to discuss the apology portion? Very good, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We are now at item fourteen, it is eleven fifty-six, ridiculously late hour. But I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We stand adjourned.